Okay, so we have to do that over again, right? We're gonna start again? Okay, so we're gonna start again since we had a little bit of a glitch, right? With the recording? That's okay. I'm retired, we can do this many times, we're good. Okay, so let me call the meeting to order, take two. So, let's see, roll call please.
Mayor Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Clerk Glaze is excused. City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston is excused. Assistant City Manager Art Cervantes.
Present.
And City Attorney Salinas.
Present.
Meeting compensation disclosure. Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-2.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members is $790 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
Okay, so we do have a conference with legal counsel. Can you read that into the record, please?
Close session. Item number one, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.98, A, Gabina Galas versus City of Southgate, County of Los Angeles et al. B, Bonoque Pacific California versus LA CMTA.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney and...
Nothing further at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, let me open it up to the audience. See no one step forward, I'm gonna close that portion, I'll open it up again after. So we are going into closed session.
I want a quote like that. The color. Joyce, get the red.
We're coming back from closed session. We are missing one of our colleagues, but she indicated that she's okay with us starting, coming back. So are you ready to go here? We're on? Okay. Mr. City Attorney, can you please report back on what we discussed?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city council met in closed session to have a conference with legal counsel to discuss pending litigation. The first item was Cabina Galas versus the City of Southgate. This is a personal injury claim made against the city based on a fall that someone suffered allegedly on a city sidewalk. There was a report given by the city attorney in closed session. And following that report, a motion made by Councilmember Avalos and seconded by Mayor Ortado, and on a vote of five to zero, the council approved the defense, the city attorney's defense of that action. On item one B, Canoke Pacific, California versus the Los Angeles County Metropolitan and Transit Authority, or the LACMTA. The city council received a report by the city attorney concerning a lawsuit filed by that establishment. It's referred to as K-PAC, which is a storage facility here in the city of Southgate alleging that the MTA failed to comply with SEQA, with the SEQA statute, and failed to give proper notice to the business. The city of Southgate itself received notice of this because the lawsuit involves a business operating within the jurisdiction of the city. However, the city of Southgate itself is not a party in the action, and the action is not directed against the city itself. There was no reportable action taken by the council in closed session upon completion of that report. That completes my report. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, if anybody in the audience wishes to address the council on the items that were just discussed, please do so. Seeing no one step forward, I'm going to close the audience portion. I don't know if we have any emails?
None.
No, no emails. Okay, excellent. So we have a motion to adjourn. In a second, seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Let me know when you're ready for the 6:30 meeting.
Okay, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Southgate City Council for July 9th. It is now 6:34. Let's see, who's doing the invocation? Steve Costley, Park Director, and Joshua Valdez will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day and for all that you do provide for us, Lord. And tonight, we ask specifically, Lord, that you give wisdom to our council as they make decisions, that you give protection to our police department, and you give protection to our residents of the city of Southgate. We ask all this in your heavenly name. Amen.
Okay, your right hand over your heart, and begin. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, undivisible, in liberty, justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Mayor Ortado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dávila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Clerk Glaze is excused. City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston is excused. Assistant City Manager Cervantes.
Present.
And City Attorney Salinas.
Present.
Compensation disclosure, please.
Pursuant to government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members is $790 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, the Spanish translations. Si hay personas que necesiten traducción en español, tenemos audífonos. Si hay alguien que necesite traducción en español, por favor, le mantes una mano. Amen. Thank you.
Okay. And Arturo, thank you for being here. And who is he replacing again? What's the guy's name again? Okay, don't let him know I said that.
I'm substituting for the day.
Good. Okay, okay, item number one, public hearing.
Item number one, following the conclusion of the public hearing, the city council will consider a approving the live entertainment permit for the 1951 banquet hall to have live, to have live entertainment at 9849 Atlantic Avenue, Unit H, subject to the conditions set forth in the permits and any limitations under conditions the city council may wish to impose.
Thank you. Meredith, is this yours?
Yes. Yes, Joshua Valdez will be presenting for us, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
One moment, please.
By the way, not because of him, but Joshua's a pretty cool name.
Thank you.
And I'm going to explain why. So my wife and I were expecting, well, she was expecting a child, and she had a miscarriage, but we already had the name picked out, and so forever and a day, we'll always like that name. Not having to do with you, Joshua. Okay, so in any case. There's always an exception. He said that. Keep that in mind.
I was always told by my mother that it was a very important name, and I had a lot to live up to.
Yes.
I agree with Joshua. I was told that it's in the Bible. Condolences on your loss, but ready when you guys are. Okay.
We're ready? Okay, take it away.
Good evening, council members. Sorry. I'm Joshua Valdez, contract planner here for the city of Southgate, planning the vision to present CUP number 24-40. There is a typo in the agenda bill. It's, in the agenda bill, it's listed as 23-40. It's supposed to be 24. And it's to allow entertainment in conjunction with operation of a banquet hall at 9849 Atlantic Avenue, Unit H. Next slide, please. So the applicant is here with us today, as well as the property owner, Liliger Damaso. And again, we're here for a live entertainment, which would include DJ and a five-person band with an proposed banquet hall located at 9849 Atlantic Avenue, Unit H, which is also located in the Tweedy Mixed Use TMU One Zone. Next slide, please. Some brief background about the project. On April 18th, 2023, the applicant applied for the banquet hall type, banquet hall land use, type 58 ABC license in conjunction with the banquet hall, which is a catering license, and live entertainment. On March 1st, 2024, the CDD director approved the administrative modification for parking, which allowed for a 10% reduction of the required parking. On April 16th, 2024, planning commission approved CUP 23-30 for a banquet hall land use and a type 58 ABC license, which again is for catering. Next, please. So this is just an aerial view to orientate everybody here as to where the project site is located. It's located in that red square on the, not the upper right, but mid-right, called out, is delineated by subject site, and you'll see it's on the northwest, northwestern corner of Atlantic and Tweedy Boulevard. Next, please. So this is just a snippet from the zoning map located in the Tweedy Boulevard specific plan, and the light pink color there is showing that this parcel, 9849 Atlantic Avenue, is located within the Tweedy Mixed Use One Zone. Next, please. So these are just some side images of the parcel as it exists now from different directions. I would like to point your attention, as it will become relevant later down the line, to the picture labeled coming south on Atlantic Avenue. You'll see there is a sort of pushout from the roof line and a pretty substantial wall. That is a 22-foot CMU block wall, which is currently acting as a mitigation measure for the noise generated by those businesses to the adjacent residents. And it's also on the west and northern side of the parcel. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. Next slide, please. So these are some additional photos of the site, but these are orientated as if you're coming from Tweedy, while the other ones were off of Atlantic. And again, to point your attention to the upper left photo, which would show the similar 22-foot CMU block wall acting as a noise buffer between the residents on the east-western side of the parcel. Next slide, please. So brief project description pursuant to table 11.51 of the Southgate Municipal Code, sorry, pursuant to the table 11.51 in the Southgate Municipal Code, section 11.51-30, titled Review Types and Responsibilities. City Council is the designated body review authority for final approval of a live entertainment permit. So this project was taken to planning commission, but they did not vote on whether or not to allow for live, live entertainment. So the proposed entertainment consists of the following. The hours of operations will align with the hours of hours of operations for the banquet hall, which is from 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM, Monday through Sunday. The live entertainment itself would either be a five-person band or a disc jockey. I would imagine that perhaps they also would have a five-person band and then maybe alternate to a DJ later in the, in the day, depending on, well, preference. Next slide, please. So here is a photo of the site plan showing all the existing businesses and the parking situation. So the project site is located within an existing shopping center, fully developed. Once these applicants move in, it'll be fully occupied. And the shopping center is again at the northwest corner of Tweedy Boulevard and Atlantic Avenue. There are two commercial buildings on site. There's one standalone building, which has El Pescador, which you could see off of Atlantic. It's the only building there. And then the larger building is where all the other commercial land uses are located. And then the darker shades is where the banquet hall is being proposed on that very upper right. Next slide. Oh, sorry. One more. I just wanted to say there's 94 parking spots available at the site. Next slide, please. Sorry. So here's a zoom in on the floor plan. So again, the hours of operation will be Monday through Sunday, 5:00 to 12, 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Live entertainment would consist of the five-person band, a disc jockey, DJ, maximum capacity of 171 people. There'll be five employees and one security guard on staff during the banquet halls' operating hours. Next slide, please. So in anticipation for concerns regarding noise, there's been some mitigations placed. So the existing mitigation is the 22-foot solid masonry wall on the northern and western boundary of the parcel. This acts as a sound barrier catching, well, buffering out that sound as it goes towards those residents. Next, there was a noise impact study conducted by the applicant. They hired innovative noise consulting to conduct the noise, well, to conduct the study at the project site, which was between the hours of 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM on a Friday evening. The study was conducted to predict constant steady state noise levels at the banquet hall and within the surrounding environment. The results were based on the loudest allowable operating noise levels, which showed that the loudest pressure in the surrounding residential area will be at most 39. The noise level is within the allowed noise range for nighttime activities, which is 40 decimals. And to further show their commitment to this project and to mitigate any noise impacts, applicant is also willing and is going to install hardware or software volume limiter to ensure that the noise level is within an acceptable range. Next slide, So these are just a brief summary of recommendations of conditions for the approval. There is a longer list in the agenda packet, but these are the ones I wanted to highlight to show that there's adequate conditions in place to mitigate any concerns that residents may have regarding this type of land use. So the first one is again, the permitted hours of operation, which are from 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM. They cannot divert from that. The applicant shall provide a minimum of one security on site to, during the operation of the live entertainment, to make sure that the noise, well, not noise, but the people are contained and, you know, people get rowdy when they go outside. The business owner and applicant shall ensure that the customers do not loiter in the parking lot areas of the business. And then again, the noise generated from the business shall comply with the Southgate Municipal Code, section 11.34.80. In any case, noise shall not exceed 50 decimals measured at the property line, which the 50 decimals is the all-day sound, not necessarily the night. We could change that. Okay, next slide. So staff recommends that the city's Southgate, that the Southgate City Council apologizes, determine that this project qualifies for category exemption under SEQA guidelines, section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities, in that the project involves a negligible expansion of activities allowed within a banquet hall without alterations or expansion of existing commercial building and thereby is exempt from SEQA. Also, to approve conditional use permit number 24-40, subject to the proposed conditions of approval and the other conditions that the city council may wish to impose. Thank you, council members. That concludes my presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Joshua. So before I open it up to the audience, I want to see if any of my colleagues have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, because this is a public hearing, I think we should allow the applicant to make comments first, and then once you hear that, then open it up for questions.
You said that we're here? Okay.
We should ask that they identify themselves and their relationship to the business.
Good evening. My name is Liliger Damaso with Liquor License Brokers, and I'm here along with the applicant in regards to today's item on the agenda. The applicant is looking forward to be able to opening a viable business here in the city. The spot, their location actually has been vacant for many years. So at the end of the day, being able to operate a responsible banquet hall does go hand in hand with proposing, with the proposal of the live entertainment portion of it. We want to make sure and make clear that she's not trying to bring in a bar. This is not a nightclub. It's just a space for people to be able to gather and celebrate appropriately, whether it's a quinceañera, whether it's work retirement, whether it's a birthday party, whether it's a baby shower, that may or may not include live entertainment. She just wants to have the option to be able to offer that. And we're here for any questions, if you have any. Thank you.
Can you please identify, please identify who the applicant members are that are here with you, please?
Yes. They'll come in and say hi.
I saw you're looking around. That was a city attorney talking. I throw my voice that way sometimes.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Lyman.
I'm Mercedes Roffles.
And what is your, just, we're doing this because it's a public hearing and the record has to identify who's present, who's speaking. Can you just identify what your relation is to the business itself? Are you the owners? Are you the landlord?
Yes. We are the owners.
And what, do you have official designations for the company? Like, are you the president, the CEO? Can you identify that?
The CEO.
And, and who's speaking?
Mercedes Roffles.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roffles. Appreciate it.
Yeah. And so colleagues, do you have any questions for them?
Yes, Mayor. Are you the owners of just that or the whole plaza? I'm just curious.
No, we're just the owner of that. That's actually, we're actually doing a restaurant right next to it. It's all, it's a, you know, the space is about, you know, about 6,400 square feet. So we actually have five other, we have five other locations. So we are going to create a restaurant on, on one side of the building and then the rest is going to be, you know, like the banquet hall. So.
Thank you. Any other questions? But what's the capacity there? I know there used to be a pizza place there before, Pizza Planet, I think it was what it was called. Didn't do too well. But yours, I'm assuming it's for rental, right? Or some people go in and say, hey, we want to lease the space out for a party?
Yes.
And this is what it's for? But it's not going to be like open to the public?
No. Yeah. I mean, you have to have, you know, like a contract and everything, you know, in order for us to, you know, to go ahead and rent out the space.
And so how many people will be able to attend? And the reason I ask is because I know it mentioned the amount of spaces, parking spaces?
Yeah.
And I just want to have an image in my head as to the impact that it might have on the liquor store, for example, the other salons that are there to El Pescador.
It's 150.
So, and.
I think the report indicated that it's 171.
It wasn't 71. I'm not sure if that includes employees and everything else, but it's 150 guests.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, colleagues?
Well, I initially heard that there was 91 space parking. So it's 150 or 91?
There are 94 parking spaces?
94.
Yes. Sorry.
And, and the restaurant, you said that's separate from this project, right?
Correct. Correct. So if, I forgot Chris's boss's name. What's his name? Can you, yes, James, there you go. Thank you, Joshua. James, can you go back a little bit?
Well.
One more, right there. So here you'll see the banquet hall is the one with the tables. And then there's the shared kitchen area, which has those black squares or black figures. And then the hash, the dashes, that's the restaurant, the pan.
So it's one part of one project?
It, yes, it came in as one project, but given with the municipal code section, it's been separated into two parts. So planning commission, this project originally went to planning commission for the banquet hall and the liquor license for the restaurant. The restaurant has a standalone liquor license, type 41. And then the catering, the banquet hall has a type 58 catering license, which isn't a standalone license. I want to emphasize they, you can't just bring in your own booze. You have to have a licensed ABC individual with, with the liquor license, like a type 41, to provide those services in conjunction with the type 58. And so because the municipal code section says that live entertainment is to be approved by you guys, by city council, planning commission didn't vote on that aspect of the project. So that's why we came here now in front of you to present the live entertainment portion in conjunction with the banquet hall, which was previously approved.
I have a question.
Yes.
So what you're saying is that most of the food is going to be catered in. It's not going to be cooked there?
It's, it's going to be either or. We are going to be, we, you know, it all depends on what they want, but they can either, we can either bring like food in or we can actually cook it. And just, just to, just to clarify, the restaurant won't be open at the same time as the hall. The restaurant is open till 3:00 PM and then the hall will be open at 5:00.
In the morning, it's going to be a restaurant and then at 3 o'clock it closes.
Yes.
And then.
At 5:00 it starts to.
And the live music will only be for the evening.
Yes, correct.
Anything else? Madam?
Yes. So I'm trying to understand the logic as to, it was presented to the planning commission, but the live entertainment was not presented to them or?
They were.
Was also presented, but they just could not vote because it needs to come to council?
The latter.
Okay. So we're talking about a project that's both a restaurant as well as a banquet hall. Am I correct?
No, you guys are only voting on the banquet hall. The restaurant has already, the restaurant is allowed by right. The only thing that planning commission approved was the alcohol.
Okay.
So that's already done. We're here today for live entertainment.
Okay.
For the banquet hall only, exclusively for the banquet hall.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Okay, seeing no other questions at this time, I'm going to open it up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one step forward, I'm going to close the audience portion. Do we have any emails on this?
Yes, sir. From Mario Dominguez. Mr. Dominguez requests that the city council approve the conditional use permit for live entertainment at the banquet hall. He emphasizes on the city's lack of nightlife and places for adults to resocialize and have fun at night. Mr. Dominguez criticizes the council for potentially denying the permit, expressing frustration and disappointment with their perceived lack of consideration for residents' needs and desires. That's it.
Thank you. I'll call him up and thank him for the kind words later on. He's a friend of mine, by the way. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, so I'm going to close that portion as well. So let me see. I understand that no, like amplifiers are going to be used for the live music, right? But the DJ will have some sort of sound system, I'm assuming. I can't imagine a DJ not having that. So, but you're going to limit the decibels?
Mr. Mayor, could you have someone just come to the microphone so that it could be recorded properly?
And the owners also can speak on that.
I think, I think it shouldn't be staff. I think it should be the owners responding to these questions, please, or the owner's representative.
Mercedes and, yeah. We just want to get a better understanding. Again, look, my son plays.
No, yeah.
Music, but they play with amplifiers and all that. And it's a totally different setup.
Yeah.
But this is an acoustic with no amplifiers. I get that.
Yes. The only, the only amplifier that we will have for the band is whoever is actually going to sing. The, the, the instruments are not going to have any, any amplifiers. And then in regards to the DJ, of course, it's going to have, it's going to also have, you know, like speakers. There's a two max speakers and it's going to be below, you know, the decimal that it's required by the city of Southgate. We did a intensive, like, test.
Noise study?
That will let us know how much, how much sound or how many speakers we needed in order to, you know, qualify for that.
Okay. And again, because in the evening is, I guess, where a lot of people will be going to like the restaurant out there. Do they have the staff? Did we get any concerns from El Pescador or anybody else on that? We didn't? Okay, well, there you go.
Were they notified? Not by the press, the, the notice on the press. Did we notify them personally that this was happening? That's what I wanted to know.
Personally, we, we did not notify, we didn't go to the businesses ourselves. Well, when we did the administrative modification, we did go to the businesses and they did, go give us their support for the land uses. So they are aware of what's going in and they were notified twice with mailers, not just the newspapers. So they were sent something in the mail twice.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes. Can we just get clarification? Were they notified that the applicant was seeking a live permit? I don't think we got clarity on that. Yeah.
So the purpose line on the mailer read, live entertainment permit in conjunction with a banquet hall at 9849 Atlantic Avenue, Unit H?
Thank you. So this is for, for staff. So the 94 parking spots that are there at the property, what, I know we did a 10% reduction for their, for use permit, right? What are the total parking spots? Did that take into consideration what the other businesses limits are? And so the, what is the total parking spots available there in the actual premises? Is that 94?
The required parking spaces for the existing land use is actually 81.
Okay.
With the proposed use, it's actually 81 plus 26.
Okay.
And they only have 94 parking spaces.
So, so that's my concern. Because, and I know we're not voting on that today, but I'm wondering what staff's idea was into identifying that we have 27 additional parking spaces for a party that can be up to 150, assuming that you have four people per car. You're still looking at a pretty dense parking lot for a lot of the businesses that are there. Was there any consideration on additional parking locations that we have, you know, nearby?
So what we've done is there's actually a parking study that was also conducted by the applicant. And based on the number of land uses that are closed by the time that they open this particular use, majority of the businesses will be closed. They start to close at 2:30, 5, 6, and 7. So whereas anticipating by the time that you have people attending the event, a majority of the parking spaces will be vacant for this particular use.
Okay.
With the exception of the restaurant.
Of the restaurant or the liquor store?
And that's accounted for as well.
Or the liquor store.
Again, the required parking for this particular use, the banquet hall, is 20, is 19 based on the square footage of the banquet hall, plus six additional parking spaces for kitchen use. So that's, you know, that's 19 plus, plus six. Actually, it's 25, not 26. My apologies. So we do have sufficient parking in regards to the 25 additional parking required because again, of the businesses that are going to be closed by the time they have this banquet open.
Okay, so I just want to understand that. Our city ordinance currently says that a, a location that can hold up to 150 people only needs 27. only needs twenty-seven parking spots?
Yes. It is. Because again, it's based on land use and square footage. And again, the number of parking spaces is determined by the area of that building that's occupied.
Right.
Any other questions?
I wanna go back to the live entertainment, and I think that's, that's why we're here. Uh, life entertainment. Um, we're also talking about bringing in musicians, right, like banda, like mariachi. And um, 'cause I know banda is pretty loud. Have uh, um, and I think that would be one of my concerns. It's uh, how loud it gets when it comes to with, uh, with banda. And um, in mariachi, it's loud, but not that loud. But when, when we're talking about live music, and uh, and we know that, um, you know, we live here in a Hispanic area, and mostly it's banda that we uh, we like to bring into our uh, to, you know, to our parties. And that would be a little concerning to me, um, the live banda. So um, mariachi, I can see it's uh, normally it's only two hours, but when it comes down to the party, normally it's about the five hours of live music, and it can get pretty loud. And um.
The applicant has agreed to a self-imposed policing of the noise level that they're proposing. And again, they do have the limiter, the sound limiter that they've also, uh, they'll be implementing or installing within the facility. So once they exceed that amount, um, then they're required to lower it. And again, I mean, there are, I'm sure, you know, events when they're going to exceed that amount, and unfortunately, we're going to have to rely on people complaining at that point.
Right, and also back to the noise, that our residents around the area, 'cause we do have apartments, and then we have homes on Pine Hertz, um, would they also notify by mail?
Yes, it's within a thousand-foot radius of the facility.
Do we have any residents here?
You know, we have not received any calls or complaints about the proposed use um, here or when we presented it to Planning Commission.
First of all, let me just thank you for coming up. Um, I know it could be a little intimidating, so thank you, and we appreciate your patience. My only concern is that it's basically every single day of the week. Um, and the noise level is something that is concerning. I know you're gonna be policing it. Um, are you going to have special speakers installed so that you actually have control over that sound? Um, I know you indicated that you're gonna have live band. Some instruments don't need to be amplified. They're already good, like the trombone for the banda. Um, so can you explain to me exactly how is it that you're going to be policing it and containing it within your establishment?
I know that it, it does show that it's, you know, every day of the week, but, you know, honestly, most of the music, I'm sure it'll be like on a weekend. Um, you know, I do want it to be open just because you never know, you know, if someone wants to do it on a Monday, which is, you know, un, unlikely, but uh, I just didn't wanna be restricted to just like, you know, two or three days out of the week. Um, in regards to sound, we, we will be installing um, what is it called? A noise uh, like, some like hardware that you can know exactly how, how loud it is. Um, there are some speakers I have seen that we won't be installing, like, our own speakers. At least not in the beginning, you know, hopefully, you know, in, you know, in the future, but uh, we will be uh, monitoring, of course, the sound. Uh, I mean, this is for us, it's, you know, important not to um, disrupt, you know, like the people around it, and we are, you know, like business owners for, you know, over twelve years. So I don't think, I mean, for us, it's important to, to go by what is required by you guys. So we will do, you know, the right thing.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
I, I did wanna add the fact that the actual banquet hall, if, if you look at the floor plan, there aren't any windows. Um, so that does help when it comes down to enclosing the noise. And the way that when the noise uh, study was actually done, the speakers will actually be placed where the music or any type of sound will move away from any type of residential area. And yes, again, the twenty-two-foot-high C M U that already embodies the shopping center within itself does serve as a buffer. Um, but like the applicants have said, you know, they're, they're responsible. They are business owners, and they don't wanna come into the city and cause any type of nuisance. They don't wanna be a nuisance. It's just again about being a profitable business that will also provide employment for um, people that reside here in the city as well.
And so Mayor, you mentioned something about uh, that there's really not a real way of, of knowing whether there's a violation or not, that it will require a complaint. A lot of times, people just don't complain. But how will we know whether they're actually going over ourselves? How do we know? Because I wanna make sure that if we decide to move forward on this, that every other day, we're gonna get a complaint, and then we just say, hey, you lowered, and you lowered, and the next day, it happens again, and so on. It just, so how will we control that?
Uh, if I could interject really quickly, um, there is a condition if we do get those complaints after a certain amount of offenses, um, we do retain the right to revoke the C U P for live entertainment.
You said we have a certain amount. What, what is the amount?
I think it's three.
Three.
And are those reportable to the police department?
Yes. Well, if the code enforcement gets them, police departments, any, it doesn't specify only from P D, it's noise complaints.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Mayor, I just wanna, um, you know, I, I frequent that space, that location, the Pescador there quite a bit, and then, and I know on weekends, and I know I, some, there's not a lot, it, you know, there's cars, there's cars there in the weekend, and I know that's not, it doesn't, it's not a very big lot. So I suspect that uh, with a hundred and fifty, that that parking lot will be full, and it'll impact some of the businesses. I'm pretty sure uh, the liquor store, the Pescador, I think that that's gonna eventually happen. Um, but uh, and then that means that some of the cars will park off-site, like into the community or at the park uh, in, in that area. I, I see that happening. Uh, because uh, you know, it's hard to monitor a hundred and fifty. I don't see, uh, you know, the other thing, you know, I just, I like the idea of having that here, but then the one security guard, who's gonna watch the parking outside and what's going on inside? I think that that might be a, you know, depending on the people that are renting the, the facility again, you know, it could vary. Uh, but uh, I, I, I like, like the mayor indicated, um, we had something like this with a bar down not too far from here, and I remember that uh, we allowed the permit. All of a sudden, you know, a lot of residents from the area were coming to the, to the council to complain. So I suspect that some of those people right on the other side by the park, uh, once they, you know, once the guys started going, I, I suspect that some of them will, that the, the noise will carry over, especially with, I mean, if they're, I suspect whoever having the party is gonna bring their own entertainment, right? I, I would think. You know, and so, uh, just some, some concerns that, and, and that uh, from, from P D. So if it's a pilot, is this what it is? It's kind of staff, it's kind of, we pilot, we see how it goes, and then getting on some of the feedback, or is, once you go down this road, how does that work?
Well, you do have an option here. I, I would say, um, if you are doubtful about the proposed use, um, there's also, we can also recommend that, you know, we can come back in six months to report to you how the activity is going. Um, again, but I just wanna remind council that the request for tonight is for the live entertainment and not for the banquet hall.
Right.
So the banquet hall has already been approved. Regardless of what happens tonight, the banquet hall and the restaurant, those uses have been approved. So if you have doubts about the actual live entertainment portion of it, um, you have the option to say, you know what, staff, we have some concerns, why don't you bring this back? Have issued a C U P tonight, if that's what, you know, that is your preference. Come back to us in six months and report back to see if there's been any complaints.
That, that sounds, to me, that sounds acceptable, and, and so I will make that motion. And we have a motion in a second.
And uh, Mayor, if I may, I would recommend a year, because unless the establishment is ready to go today, it might take time for them to have the establishment up and running. So in a year, am, am I mistaken? Is it ready? When are you guys planning to open? And then maybe time it around there?
After uh, the approval, we have six months to build and, and get everything done. So I would, it will be six months from, you know, from today.
Yeah, the, the idea was for six months from the time they open, so we'll go with that route.
And just uh, for discussion, uh, I'll, just for clarification as well. So the, they're not supplying the sound system. They're gonna be supplying the, the software that will uh, monitor the decibels that are being pushed out by the DJ that is hired and anything like that. Now, my question is, are you creating a, a business model where you uh, get a list of DJs that you approve as a facility, that you can say, here are the list of DJs that you can hire from, because we know that they are very uh, compliant to our requirements? Are, are you guys doing that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Mayor, I'm just questioning. I know we rent our facilities, right? So how do we compare in prices? I'm just comparing, I mean, we. No. For their location. And, you know, our, our goal is whoever opens a business here is, is successful.
Okay.
And success means within the guidelines that are there without an impact to the other people. So I, I'll, I'll make a motion that we go for a six-month period, uh, from the time that they're ready to open, and we have a second?
Yeah, we already had a motion and a second. Your motion did I second?
Yeah.
Uh, so just a, a point of clarity, Mr. Mayor, on that motion, if I may. So the, you're granting the conditional use permit. You're finding that you want to allow for the applicant to operate for a period of six months whenever they start operating. Then you want this matter to be brought back to uh, the City Council to determine whether to remove the six-month limitation and allow to continue on?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, and then I think uh, Mayor and I spoke just uh, before the City Council meeting. The Southgate Municipal Ordinance requires a resolution. It will be brought back at some point in the future, which will be consistent with your findings and with your motion tonight.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
One of the concerns um, that the app business owners actually had in regards to coming back within six months or a year is the fact that they are ready to sign a lease that's a minimum of five years commitment. So it is of a big concern that, for whatever reason, within six months or a year that they come back, something happens, and they cannot move forward with the live entertainment portion, then they're stuck with pretty much a lease that will be no use to them. So that's just, we're voicing, you know, that concern.
So the idea is that they control so that they don't have a problem.
Right.
Right? Because if we do the other and say, go ahead and do that, and we continue to have problems, then it becomes our problem. What we have to have code enforcement or police to go out there, and that's not something we really wanna undertake. So it's gonna be up to you to make sure that doesn't happen, and we come back. Fair enough? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Varone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Let me wind her up a little bit.
I'm a little undecided on, on the live entertainment, just 'cause I know it's gonna be pretty loud. But if we're coming back within six weeks, uh, six months, six months, I'm gonna go ahead and say yes.
And Mayor Hurtado?
Yes. Thank you so much. Wish you the best of luck.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, so, let me go back here. I'm sorry, my screen is taking a little bit longer to get to the page. Okay, so we finished item number one, uh, comments from the audience. At this time, any member of the audience that wishes to address us on anything that's not on the agenda, please step forward. And state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Eddie Mangum, live on Wood Avenue. And I know it's, it's, it's a problem that everybody knows about, the illegal fireworks. But, you know, it, it's got way out of hand. I've got an aunt that lives down the street from me that's ninety years old, and every time they set them off, she jumps. And one of these days, it's gonna kill her. But I just need help. I've called for four, for four years in a row now. I've called the police department, and I've never got a response. I wanted, I wanted to file a complaint. I wanted, I wanted them, and they never, they never show up. So I'm just, I'm, I'm looking for, for help. I'm just asking the City Council if I can get any help from them.
Okay, at this time, you're addressing us on items that are not on the agenda, and we are by law prohibited from responding to you here tonight.
Well, I, I understand that. It's, you know, it's a, it's a law that's hard to enforce because the police have gotta catch them ready-handed. And so is, is it gonna take banning fireworks in Southgate? Uh, you know, that may be one of the answers. I don't know. But I do need help. Everybody on my block, there's, there's a couple of, you know, a couple of people on the, on the block that's, that's part of it. But most of the people on my block, on Fifty-two Hundred Wood, are, are elderly people, and they, you know, and it, it's very disturbing. And you were talking about the noise level. You should be on, you should be on Wood Avenue on Fourth of July. So I'm just, like I said, I'm just looking for some help, and any help that you can give me will be well appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Amy Lu. I'm the Community Library Manager at Lethernar Weaver Library on Tweedy. Um, I'm just here to remind you and the entire community that the library is serving free lunches this summer um, to kids under eighteen, twelve to one P M. on weekdays until August ninth. So please come take advantage of that and the A C. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention and invite you to is that One Book One County is happening this summer. The book is called L.A. Weather by Maria Amparo Escanon. Um, the book discussion is actually going on right now, but we have a very special landscaping, landscape painting to go with that book that's happening at the end of the month, Tuesday, July thirtieth at six P M. Adults are welcome with any skill level, and we're providing all the, all the supplies for that. So um, that's gonna be left here at City Hall as well for people to grab. I invite you to just come and enjoy the A C at the library while we're open as well. It's gonna be pretty hot. Everyone, take care of yourself and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Hilda Cabrera, and I live in ninety-seven thirty-five San Juan Avenue. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you, police officers, and thank you firefighters, that they do their job every day. Um, I'm just here for um, the streets. The streets are really, really bad right now, and I haven't even seen any improvement. My mom, she tripped last week. She was on the curb. She tripped 'cause there's like a big gap. And um, I know on Tweedy from, I think it's from Southern, from Santa Fe and Otis, it's really, really bad, the streets. Um, there's a lot of potholes. And then um, what's another thing that I have on my agenda? I travel to go to work. I travel Santa Fe going north. And there's railroad tracks. I think it's uh, Adamore or something like that. There's a lot, a lot of trash. I mean, I could go pick it up, 'cause I don't like seeing trash. I mean, um, yeah, those are the only things I'm concerned right now. And of course, fireworks too. It has gone really, really bad. So thank you so much, and have a nice evening.
I, I hope you stay around a little while, 'cause we're gonna be talking a little bit. Okay? Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Ernesto Raviya, and I live in Main Street. My name is Ernesto Raviya, and I live in Main Street in Southgate. And today is going to be, not today, but this year is going to be 37 years that I've been living in Southgate. And for the past 16 years, I've been living health with one of the neighbors. I've called the police about seven times. At the end, one policeman told me, I know someone who helped you at the animal shelter because it was the dog, the problem. And also the neighbors. But this dog, I'm telling you the truth. It would bark 10 hours a day without stopping, not one day, the whole week. Only the owner of the house would stop him. The wife wouldn't do anything because I think they controlled the wife. And I talked to him about 10 times. I even shook his hand about three times in 10 years to see if something can happen better. Yes. And the next day, I will ask him, hey, your dog is barking again. What do you want to do? It's a dog. So it's been like that. Now, finally, the dog probably is not there anymore. Maybe died, I don't know. But now, since they approved the turning the garages into living units, he already has his garage. Someone is living in there. I got a new neighbor on the other side, which they said, we're the first in the family to own homes. And all the family wants to have parties at my house. But the problem is that now it's not the dog. Now it's the noise of playing loud music live and those new stereos that in my times used to be good sounds. I like them, but I used to respect people. When I moved to Southgate, I used to feel like really nice because it seems to be peaceful, no problem with cars, no problem with anything. Now people live like three families in one unit together. And that's why they also have so much money to spend on fireworks because they pay so little money. And I have extra money to spend on anything they want. Now with it, these parties that they do, I agree that they are supposed to celebrate something. But also they have to respect. Because we celebrated, like someone said, with mariachi on my daughter's pinceañera for two hours.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, do you have three minutes?
Okay, fine.
But before you leave, Meredith, can you get his information? Because there is a noise ordinance that needs to be addressed. So she'll get information from you?
I want to be quick then. I already called the police and those two people--
I understand.
--neighbors. And they're already really mad.
She'll get some information from you.
The only thing I suggest, can they send flyers to the neighbors? Because I'm not the only one complaining.
She's going to take your information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker.
Good evening, council. Lizette Reese from Kaufman Avenue. First of all, I wanted to thank the folks who have been fixing the streets. I've been reporting a lot of the potholes and cracks and elevated tree roots caused by elevated tree roots. So, you know, to the previous speaker, I can attest that the city responds accordingly. I mean, it doesn't happen right away. But they do a pretty good job at making it safe. I do walk a lot and run and walk my dogs all over my neighborhood. And so it's important for me because, you know, I have my little one in her little car now. And it gets pretty dangerous when I don't see the cracks coming up, which can happen, you know, somebody with limited vision. But I did have a question about that. On Alexander or kind of like those areas that are within the border of Linwood, which I believe start after the alleyway? Those are really bad areas wherever there are trees. It's like almost impossible to walk through sometimes. And so I'm curious, how does a resident or what your suggestions would be to call them and get that fixed? I don't know if it's something they overlook because it's, you know, right on the border of our cities. So I am curious about those areas. But I also wanted to be thankful to Gladys. I mentioned at the last meeting I was here that there was funding available for green space improvement projects. And they have been in communication with people from the air quality management district. So I'm hopeful that that'll get, you know, hopefully helps fund some of our ongoing projects. And yeah, just that I wanted to thank those folks involved. I think, Arturo, you got that ball rolling. So thanks again. And yeah, that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Bash. I'm here on behalf of Tweedy Mile Association. I'm current president of the Tweedy Mile. And I just want to simply request about the fireworks. Besides being loud and nuisance for the animals and pets and stuff, I'm really concerned about the fires, you know, that everybody who's using them, if they don't know how to use, it can go sideways and it can really burn down a business or a house. So this is, the amount of noise is going up and up. That means more people are using fireworks. So if there's any way we can control that or educate people to not use them, that's awesome.
Thank you, Bash. Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the audience portion. Do we have any emails on non-adjourned items?
We have one, sir.
Thank you.
Also from Mr. Mario Dominguez. Mr. Dominguez criticizes the Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission's handling of the Parks Master Plan update, noting that the process won't begin until late 2024 due to staffing issues. He blames City Hall for being disorganized and failing to support necessary city business, condemning the city council members and city manager for preventing progress and causing delays. Mr. Dominguez also expresses frustration with the city council contrasting their approach unfavorably with Downey's. He admires Downey's community engagement methods for budget and strategic planning involving residents through surveys, presentations, and public outreach campaigns. He states council members and the city manager are excluding residents from decision-making processes and treating them with disrespect. That's it, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close that part of the public speaking. Okay, so as I go around the room, if there's anything you can touch on from the comments that were made, you're welcome to do so. And I'll start over here. Steve, you're kind of lonely there, so I'll go to you first.
It's kind of nice if Art moves over there. I've got some legroom.
I hope you don't have a problem when Arturo sits next to you, you know? Okay, all right. There we go. Go ahead, Steve.
Just a couple of quick things. Fourth of July was a success. It was a good event. The crowds were actually down from previous years. We usually expect somewhere around 22,000 people. We estimate there was probably about 14,000 throughout the day. I did pack up at night for the fireworks show. I've seen and gotten a lot of good reviews on the overall fireworks show. We were able to make some changes and get some things done. The fireworks company, which has had some troubles in the past, told us they would come through, and they did. So it all went over quite well. So that was a success. Upcoming, we have more of our concerts in the park. Last Friday's was our first one. It went over well. My staff estimated about 250 people at it, which is really good for the first one. Because usually our first one's about 150. So we're up to the mariachi diva standard at the first concert. So I think we'll just grow from there. And so food trucks, rec on the run, different activities all taking place at the same time. So it was a whole family atmosphere out there, a fun day. And then just for your own calendars, this Friday, we have a concert starting at 6:00. And then on the 20th, we have our Fun Run, where you get to go out, run a mile, get a little wet, get a little muddy, get some foam on you, have some fun. So as it says, and I know Josh has ran it before. I think Gil has ran it before, too. So it's a great event and come on out and join us. That's all I've got.
I think everybody on the council is going to be out there this time. So we'll see. Okay, Wendy?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. On July 16th and July 17th, that's the Tuesday and Wednesday of next week, the water counter and the business license counter will be closed for two hours. We will do some staff training on our new Tyler Cashier software. So that will be from 8:30 to 10:30. So we'll update with community engagement team, the website, and then also we'll have signs in English and Spanish on our doors as well.
Thank you. John?
Good evening, council. Well, as always, I want to let you know about the jobs we have available here at the city. Go to cityofsouthgate.org, and there's a jobs tab. And we have quite a few great opportunities. In administrative services, we're currently looking for a deputy director of finance. Police Department, again, always looking for great police officers. There's a $15,000 or $20,000 sign-on bonus. Parks and Rec, we have a couple of part-time positions, lifeguard and a grounds rec leader, too. But it's our engineering department, great opportunities in there with engineering. So we have an associate engineer position that we're looking for, two principal civil engineers, one for CIP, section manager, and the other one for general engineering section manager. Both of those with a $10,000 sign-on bonus. We're also looking for a public works senior management analyst in engineering. And then at the yard, we're also still looking for a journey electrician. But those are the jobs we currently have available. But please go to our website or anytime you're interested in employment, we look forward to it.
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I wanted to, I'll just briefly address the fireworks. Since I've been here the last 30 years, every single time around 4th of July, we get calls for service regarding fireworks. Unfortunately, we're never going to stop it. So I don't want to be, you know, over ambitious to say we're going to be able to stop it because we've issued citations, you know, in years past, and that doesn't alter people's behavior. I was able to monitor the calls for service between June 1st of this year and July 5th. And we had about three or four calls per day on fireworks. I understand that in certain areas, it seems to be more prevalent, like near the riverbeds, where people go on the riverbeds and fire off, you know, illegal fireworks. Some of the cities and the chiefs I've talked to with, you know, neighboring cities is the first start is to ban all fireworks, the legal and illegal, because it's really hard for us to decipher what are the legal and illegal ones. We do our very best to go out there and detour and put notifications out about the dangers of handling it. But it's just unfortunately, one of those things, that time of year where it's very inconvenient for dogs and for residents and whatnot. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that on average, we had three calls for service per day from June 1st to July 5th. And the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that we did get a call from a resident that lives on Hildreth near Missouri about some construction by Southern California Edison and wanted to let the residents know that they've worked it out with the watch commander, that they'll be able to park in the park area where it's permit parking. So we're not going to be citing, we let our parking enforcement go. From time to time, we have construction around the city and we inconvenience the residents when we get city progress done. But we do want to accommodate them and we're not going to cite. So it's on Hildreth, right around the Missouri area, and they can park near the stalls where it says permit parking, and we won't cite.
Do me a favor. If you get a chance, text me that because I got to send that.
I'll forward you the email that the watch commander sent to me that referenced the information they spoke to the resident.
How many citations were they given for illegal fireworks?
Probably none. In years past, we've had a detail that officers were able to go out and just work exclusively with that. And this year, we just didn't have personnel to do it.
Chief, were there any incidents, burn incidents, things like that during the--
Surprisingly, no, not that we are aware of. Usually, at this time of year, we'll have structures that are burned or somebody that'll have a limb, you know, impacted by illegal fireworks, but none noteworthy that came up this year.
I actually heard that there was a fire at a location on the tree here in Southgate. And they said that the fire department and police responded almost immediately. So I, okay, all right. Arturo? He said nothing noteworthy. That was a small tree. It was a big tree. Arturo?
Yes, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity.
Once.
Once, yes. I'm just going to put on my public works director hat on right now. So first, to address the question with regards to how do you call for service for areas of the city that are at the city limit, whether it's Linwood, Huntington Park, or what have you? The city of Southgate collaborates well with our neighboring cities, in the case of Linwood. If the residents call Linwood to address that or they can call Southgate to address that, we'll collaborate because sometimes the issue is actually on both. So we'll collaborate. We'll schedule, so we'll invite Lizette to just call the city of Southgate, and we'll look into that issue. I do have the CIP update for you today.
Before you do that, because the issue that was brought up about the potholes, a lot of times what happens is that, and again, I was going to wait till it was my turn, but since it was brought up, a lot of times people see a pothole and they don't report it. And it's important that it's reported because our staff will go out there. I actually had a question earlier in the year. And the number of potholes that the city had taken care of, do you remember what that number was?
I don't remember the number of potholes, but we're filling potholes almost on a daily basis.
It was nearly 700 potholes that had been, at that time, we're talking about almost two months ago, about 700 potholes. But there were also multiple streets that have already been resurfaced that also had potholes, but the entire street was done. So I just want to tell you, no one's ignoring that. But if our staff isn't aware of a particular pothole, if you report it, they will address it.
Yeah.
And again, the app is one way of reporting it. But also, if you contact our public works department, they'll--
Yeah, and I'll provide a little bit more information as part of the CIP update. So for the urban orchard project, I just wanted to mention to the councils that we've reached another milestone and that we're at the final stages of approval from the county. And we've now submitted that infamous PCLUP application, which is the post-closure land use plan application. And when the county approves that, we may resume construction. We just received the draft final plans as well. So we're pretty close to ready to start construction. At the end of the day, we're just waiting for county approval. Based on our current schedule, we'll likely start construction sometime in October or after that. But again, if things go as planned and we're waiting for county approval. Next slide, please. So the resident was making inquiries with regards to roadway conditions in general. I just want to mention that the city has various tools to address or programs to address potholes in the city. Anytime you see a pothole, well, first, know that city staff is out there addressing potholes almost on a daily basis. When we receive resident complaints of a pothole, we'll try to address it within 24 hours. So if you call us, we can address those potholes. There are some streets in the city that have multiple potholes that really form over time, whether it rains. And if you call us to look at that street, we'll go out there and look and plan that as well. We also have a CIP program, like, you know, the mayor mentioned, streets that were resurfaced. This exhibit that you see out here is of the residential resurfacing project where everything that's shown in like a pink, dull, red color, those are all the streets in the west side city that the city, on the west side of the city, that the city just resurfaced. That was an investment nearing $10 million. We're getting ready to start our next phase of construction. And so this next project is a residential resurfacing project, phase four, where we're going to address Missouri Liberty Frontage Road. And Liberty is a street that has regularly come to our attention, and we're going to address it as well as streets around Southgate Park, like Hildreth, Pinehurst, and Southern. So all of those streets would be addressed as part of the next phase. That project is under design, and you'll see everything, all the highlighted in blue, of the current status of the project, which is we're getting ready to complete design in August, after which we'll go out to bid. But feel free to call us, and we'll certainly address any potholes you report. Next slide. With regards to Tweedy Mile in particular, tonight, the city council is going to be considering awarding-- awarding a construction contract for what we call the first phase of the Tweedy Mile Completes Projects, which is a complete repair and rehabilitation of the Tweedy Mile, as well as an enhancement and replacement of old furniture. This is just a quick, one slide piece of information, just to report on progress, in that tonight, council is considering awarding construction, and if all goes well, we could be starting construction as soon as August of 2024. Next slide. On the Long Beach Boulevard Complete Streets Project, just wanted to mention that we're on schedule to complete, substantially complete construction this month. The contractor is ready to start the landscaping this week, if they haven't already, but there's going to be work landscaping. And then at the end of the month, we're going to be resurfacing the streets. We'll be at substantial completion by the end of this month. Next slide. On the Garfield Avenue Complete Streets Project, we're almost at substantial completion, minus all of the new roadway striping that we need to do. So all of the hard improvements, like the media and the landscaping, the irrigation, everything's in place, except the striping, which we plan to do within the next two, three weeks. We're trying to move the contractor along. There are some design challenges that we're trying to get through and resolve in order to put that in place. So that will be substantially completed at the end of the month as well. Next slide. And then this is just the typical slide that I put up all every council meeting, just to show the status of some of the projects. I won't go into detail, but this is here tonight, as well as it's posted on the city's website. Next slide. And just five-year history of all of the work that we're doing here in the city. We do often get complaints or concerns that the city is not proactive in addressing our street conditions. Many residents are driving through streets that are in need of improvement, and that's what they see. But the bigger picture is shown here, and it can also be accessed on the city website, that we're working on a variety of improvements throughout the city. Every corridor there highlighted in yellow are projects that we've either completed construction on, or are in the process of completed. Aside from street projects, we have park projects, facility projects, water quality projects. It's just a long list of projects, and these are only the highlights. So if anybody from the general public wants to learn more, they can either contact the public works department, or go on the city website. Next slide. And that's the last slide. Thank you.
Yeah, and just so our staff knows, don't feel bad. I've been asking Arturo to give these updates. It's not that I don't like you guys. But, you know, we hear more about public works, that they're not doing anything, they're not doing anything, that potholes here, potholes there. And it's not like, you know, we don't want to hear about it. I mean, it's true, there's potholes everywhere, but staff is not sitting on their hands. Public Works is doing a great job of addressing a lot of the infrastructure issues, and it's just not being put out there. And I think it's important that people are able to listen to some of the updates. And again, those people that don't know, the city of Southgate has 127 miles worth of streets, 11 miles worth of alleyways. It's 138 miles roughly of streets that have to be maintained, and they're doing a really good job of doing that. Not just addressing the individual potholes, but resurfacing a lot of the streets. And again, I asked them to give us updates during meetings. I was just trying to buy some time to give Meredith time to come out here. So Meredith?
Mr. Mayor, can I make, or can I ask Arturo to add to his comments regarding the funding for our street resurfacing? A lot of it is coming from, you know, other revenues outside of general fund. We get those annually, and then we assess them to certain projects. We would love to be able to do every street on the entire city, but of course, we don't get the funding for that. What is a typical, you know, phase of resurfacing cost, and how much is that, you know, allocated?
Yeah, so, you know, at the highest level, the city right now has a five-year CIP program that is fully funded to the tune of about $150 million. This year, the council just approved a CIP that, together with a carryover, adds up to over $100 million in fully funded projects that, many of which, for example, last fiscal year, we spent about $42 million implementing those projects. So there's a lot of funding available right now for improvements now. The breakout of that funding is a mix of local return funds, which means we get funding on an annual basis, or grant funds, which means we receive and compete for funding for very specific projects. When it comes to roadway projects, there are a lot of grant funding opportunities for major corridors, right? So that's why you see investments on Firestone, on Garfield, and what have you. Unfortunately, when it comes to residential streets, grant funding is just not available. When the state approved the SB 1 funds, that gave us a little bit more capacity to do residential streets, which we're fully dedicating to residential streets. Therefore, the residential resurfacing projects that you're seeing, we have about just over $2 million that we dedicate to that, and that's kind of our limitation. If we wanted to find more money for residential streets, it becomes a challenge, or it means we have to pass on grant funds, because we're using the local return funds as match. What does that mean? You know, 10% of local return funds or match buys you 90% of grant funds. That's, you know, 10 million buys you, you know, $100 million conceptually, right? So it's a balance that we're trying to do, but we now do have a very, you know, active residential resurfacing project that, you know, we're on phase four now, so we're moving that forward. But we are making, trying to do whatever we can to do more residential streets. One last thing, we are changing direction in the approach that we're resurfacing residential streets with a, what's called a Cape Seal Technique, as opposed to a grind and overlay. It's about a fourth of the cost. We've done that, I've done that in other cities that I work for. And so for that amount of money, we're probably going to be able to almost double or triple the number of streets that we're going to resurface on residential neighborhoods. So that effort will be increasing over time.
How much, just real quick, how much money did we get from Measure M?
From Measure M ballpark, probably between 1.5 and $2 million, or what have you. But a lot of the measure and money in Measure R goes to the maintenance side. So we're using it to fund maintenance staff that is going out there fixing sidewalks and, you know, fixing potholes. So that money doesn't become available for residential resurfacing, as an example. So that's where we're trying to balance all of the needs.
The reason I asked the question is because we were part of a team, if you remember, back in 2016, Measure M came before the voters, and Garcetti wanted every city to support Measure M, to support a lot of the projects, mainly on the west side of LA, which we found that it was unfair. And we fought that, we opposed it to the point that a lot of the cities joined us and said, no, we're not going to support Measure M unless we get something back. And Garcetti's staff and someone from the state of California came out here, and we met at the Azalea Room, and we got them to agree to return some of the Measure M funds back to local communities. And every city in South, in LA County, in this southeast LA area, are now benefiting from the fight that we put out there. And we would not have agreed to this unless we had gotten approval to get some money back. I just needed to bring that out. Okay. Meredith, I'm sorry, we bypassed you.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Yes, I like Meredith. Okay, let's see. Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, nothing, thank you.
You don't get a like, you know that, right? That's just, it goes with the territory. Okay, Mr. City Treasurer?
All right, just have one item I just wanted to discuss. So it's regarding the fireworks situation. You know, it does appear, you know, that it has grown, maybe this year more than the previous years. And, you know, I would be supportive, and I would urge the council to also consider a full city ban of fireworks. I know it's a bold statement, and not everyone will agree with me, but, you know, we look at the dangers and the public safety from air quality, structure fires. I mean, I was, you know, a victim of a structure fire too, due to an illegal firework. That was a few years ago, an illegal firework landed on my roof. Me and my children and my wife are inside the house, we had no clue. You know, if it wasn't for some of my neighbors that ran out and banged on my door and called the fire department, who knows how bad, you know, that structure fire would have been. And so, now there's, you know, I'm sure many, you know, stories like that. You know, the number of animals that ended up in Siaka, just right after 4th of July, I think it exceeded over 100, you know, pets. So it is, you know, it is probably time for us to, you know, look at, you know, really considering a complete ban on fireworks in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the city clerks?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Councilwoman Avalos?
Thank you. I'm a little saddened to hear that obviously there were a lot of fireworks that were being blown up. I contacted my vet and said, hey, what can I give my three little ones to calm them down? He gave me medication, but even that didn't work, because that's not bad. The fireworks were. But I did hear a wonderful report from a beautiful woman in my life, my mother, who enjoyed the fireworks, which she was really happy to be out and about. So thank you for that. I hope a lot of our seniors were able to enjoy the fireworks. Unfortunately, it was after that they left the event, is that it really started all over the city. So it was really sad to hear, to come back to that. Other than that, I had the pleasure of representing our educators up in Philadelphia, where our forefathers founded our beautiful country. Unfortunately, we had to cancel our conference because the National Educators Association employees went on strike. And as a union, we decided not to cross that picket line and be respectful. So I was able to get some R and R out there, which was really nice. Other than that, I have a vector control meeting this Thursday, and I will be reporting on that. So other than that, I hope everybody had a safe and sane 4th of July. And I look forward to July 20th. Let's see if I'm up to the challenge. Thank you.
You will be. Okay, Councilmember Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, regarding, you know, the 4th of July, I would like to say Steve, your staff did an amazing job on putting on a great show. But also, you know, we walked out right around 10:30 from the park, from the carnival, and at 10:30, the park looked almost immaculate. So really, a big shout out to the Parks and Rec staff. I think Public Works, was Public Works out there as well? No, it was all Parks and Recs? Okay. Yeah. But, well, I saw the staff out there. Whenever a bag was full, a trash bag, a trash can was full, they were bagging it up, throwing it in the back of a pickup truck. They did a great job. So I really walked to the parking lot quite a ways, and at 10:30, it just looked great. And the event had just ended. So, you know, please let them know that our council is very appreciative of the effort and the work that they did. They did a great job that day. The next morning, park looked brand new. So great job by your staff. You know, I hear the concerns regarding fireworks. My neighbors were asking questions as well, you know, how, you know, what can the city do to help them out? You know, I do know that a lot of nonprofits utilize to sell fireworks to be able to benefit their organizations. We have a lot of our sports teams that do, some schools that do sales from the, you know, the legal firework stands, that do generate some income for them. You know, in driving around through our local cities, we see, you know, banners that say legal firework, fine, up to 10,000, I think I saw in Whittier. I'm wondering if we can probably ask police to go out and, you know, survey if a higher fine is helping the cause in some of these other cities. I'm pretty sure you probably had conversations that way. Maybe it's something that we would have to then come back and consider and say, all right, if we want to, you know, try to limit the number of illegal fireworks, maybe we increase the fine for it in a way. Because I would hate to say that no fireworks are allowed in our city 100%, only because we do have a lot of nonprofits that utilize that as our largest fundraiser, to be able to run their programs. So I think it's something that we have to hear both sides and be considerate of that. So that's regarding the fireworks. So on another thing, Steve, one of the things that my kids, or my little one, is most excited about, is something that she just saw on my phone regarding August 3rd. The park is doing a camp night out for August 3rd, so families can go out and, you know, put a tent up, camp overnight at Southgate Park Large Quad. Do you have any more information on that?
Yes, we did just open registration for our overnight camp. It'll take place in the Large Quad. We have activities going. We'll have bonfire over by the Boy Scout area. We'll be doing some other things. There's some nighttime fun games that are going to go on. It's going to be a great night. And then in the morning, breakfast will be served and the whole thing. So it's a great night for kids to be in a safe environment, to get some of their first camping experience and sleeping in a tent. Maybe not the best experience for some of the adults, unless you've got a good blow-up bed, but, you know, you sacrifice that for your kids every once in a while, just to be out there. And so, yeah, there are, it is limited, but, you know, it's not totally limited. We have a lot of space in the Large Quad, but there's staff out. They've been looking forward to this for a while.
Yeah, and I think it's a great idea. It's a good way just to be outside for a night, and then also to just meet our community, right? We're going to have a lot of community families out there. We'll be able to meet each other. It's just a great way for us to come together that way. I think that's a great idea. So again, thank you to your staff for bringing that up. I'm considering, yeah, definitely. I'm going to be called glamping, though. I'm going to take like an air mattress and.
I was going to say, are RVs welcomed? Because, you know.
You know, I'll have like masseuse there, you know. But, you know, I think it's, I think it's going to be a fun night. I think it'll be great, you know. My two older daughters are not as excited as the little one, but I'm going to force them to be out there. It's a family day. But yeah, it's going to be great. I think it'll be fun. The concert at the park, I heard, I was not able to go, but I heard the band was great. I heard the event went off well. There was a lot of dancing going on, and it was great. I really think that this is one of the larger benefits that we provide to our residents is these Friday summer concert nights. It's just a great way to be out there. Come have dinner with us, you know, out there in the community. We have great food trucks out there. We have a wonderful beer garden, to be able to just entertain, you know, our residents there. And this year, I saw that we added some fun events for the kids to do. So that was a great idea. Give them an opportunity to be out there and have a good time with their families. Again, one thing that I've always said about our, what we offer for our residents, we really stretch our dollar quite a bit. And we make sure that we have events for our community to be able to come together and really enjoy our spaces. Our park is the most beautiful space in southeast Los Angeles. I want to say that. And I think it's a great way to highlight what we have here in our community. So come out to our Friday night at the park. Yesterday, in leaving the JAA softball games that were happening, my daughter was playing, I noticed there was some work done on, or work being completed on Hildreth. And I know Chief spoke about there being a notice, or they were going to notify the residents that you can go ahead and park there on the park side. My question is a little more concerning regarding notification, is how, I'm guessing that we were notified that Edison was going to be doing work, or whoever the party was, was going to be doing work in the area. Once staff is notified, or the city is notified, do we do any outreach? I went back and tried to look at our website, our social media pages, and I didn't see any notification of work being done there, or any street closures happening in that area. Can you go through that process with me?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, the, we have an encouragement permitting process that allows other parties to come in and apply for permits to do work in the public right away, whether it's a residential property improvement, or large development, or utility companies that are here in the city improving their infrastructure. Southern California Edison is one of those companies, and they do many, many improvements throughout the city. About two years ago, they, two or three years ago, they committed to enhancing reliability of their system here because of the power shutdown. because of the power shutdown or power loss that was occurring at the time. So what they've been doing in the last two or three years is replacing a lot of their old poles to make their system more reliable. Now, in the process, we issue them a permit, and we have a bunch of conditions of approval. The city doesn't do outreach on their behalf or any one that applies for an encouragement permit. But for some projects, like the Southern California Edison project, this one in particular, we do require that they do public outreach, and we specify the level of public outreach that is required for that project. In that case, the public outreach that was required was for the immediate residents. I did learn today that Southern California Edison missed that step, and they didn't notify those residents. We've issued many, many of these permits, and we've just not gotten complaints. And this is the first complaint that's come our way. And part of that may just simply be they didn't do the outreach. We didn't have an opportunity to talk to residents in advance. But through that process, we are looking at what is the least impactful approach to permitting that, like any other project. So we went through weeks and weeks and weeks before we issued that permit to consider parking. You know, we required some night work, and it was just very limited because they wanted to shut the road in its entirety. But at the end of the day, regardless of all the conditions that we placed, the impact is what's happening today. And residents are concerned about that. I appreciate the chief's comments about allowing them to park at the park as one of the mitigations. But the outreach is required of the permitees, and in this case, they missed that step.
And I appreciate that, you know, that we hold them to that level of notifying our residents. I do think that every opportunity that we have to inform our residents of a potential impact, we should take on that responsibility as well. So, you know, we have a great community engagement department that is very active. If we are able to provide them any notification showing, hey, these streets may be closed during this time or there may be an impact in parking, please go ahead and utilize a different location to park. These are all things that I think we, as a city, we need to start being proactive and having these conversations before we're having the complaints. I think we can do that, you know, every time we have the ability to show how good we can be, I want us to take that advantage. And every time there's a permit pulled, anytime there's a project done, you know, even if the trash hauler is picking up their trash, you know, the trash bins, that's an opportunity for our city to look good. So I want to take that and make sure that we're using that to the best of our ability and being proactive and notifying our residents of those projects.
Yeah, we'll certainly have a conversation with the city manager when he returns about that particular interest. Having that ability is something that we have to look at in terms of resources and what have you. There are a lot of permits that are being issued throughout the city. We've got staff that's doing outreach, however, on city business. So we can have a conversation as to how we can achieve that goal, and we can provide more information later. But I appreciate that input.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Councilmember Reos?
Thank you, Mayor Hurtado. Thank you, Public, for showing up tonight and spending some time with us. And for Hildreth, I just want to let you know that we do have an app to, for any potholes and things that you could take pictures of and submit them to the city. So, yeah, so that'll work too and for bulky items and all that. The Fourth of July was really good. The fireworks show was a little longer. That's great than last year. You know, I was thinking about Holliday. I was at Holliday Park. And, you know, I know that we don't, we always do it at the main park. But, you know, that Holliday Park is getting some improvements maybe next year. I mean, something to think about. I mean, that part of the community, we always do activities on this side of the community. And that's kind of a community that we should be thinking about doing more activities. So maybe just something to put on your plate, Steve, to kind of... And since we do, we did remember when the speaker used to do the river project, and we showed movies there. I think that's something we should continue because the speaker, I mean, he's only in an office till November, and it's something that the city was in partnership. We should maybe pick that up. I think it's a good, there's a lot of fun things we could do along the river as we continue to make investments there and so forth. So just some food for thought there. And I want to react to the fact that you took care of the pool. I know it was closed yesterday, but it was up and running today. And so I appreciate how fast that turned around.
And I got to, now I can give back the credit to the Public Works Department because while the Parks Department helped on it, the Public Works Department did the yeoman's work of making sure it was all back together.
Yeah, I know. I saw a guy there, you know, making sure the water was good and everything else.
Yeah, and let me send the credit back to Steve. Our part is easy. We just have to fix something. Steve's got to deal with the complaints and all the unhappy kids looking at him with the droopy face, and that's got to be much harder than our job. So all credit to Steve.
I'm starting to hear kumbaya music going on.
Okay, let me finish my report here. So cool, the cool setter. Hey, look, that's great. You got that work going. So because it's too hot out there, we're ready to respond to folks that don't have air conditioning and so forth. So that's great. And what else? And I don't know if it's time to talk about another, you talked a lot about all this infrastructure and projects we have, street improvements, you know. Then we'd had to go out to a bond to get their streets paved and all of that. So we've been going the other way or another route of getting all these grants to help, and that's great. I mean, you were going to say...
Oh, if you were looking for comments.
No, no, I'm just so, I like the idea that we're making all these improvements, especially on the West Side, being strategic about where it's the worst streets, and we're making improvement. We're moving right along to make more improvements. So that's so cool. I think that making that happen. And so that's it. I think I'm looking forward to the fun, what is it, the fun run? The fun run and getting some of us to participate and have fun. And then also ICA this weekend coming up in San Diego, so where some of the council will be taking part in a conference to learn more about governing and how to improve our cities and so forth. So that's all I have to say.
Make sure you have paramedics available.
Oh, they're right across the street. Don't worry.
Madam Vice Mayor, you're up to bat.
Thank you. Very quick, and I want to sound redundant, but fireworks was wonderful. Just very, very good fireworks. The fun run, I'm not going to be able to be there. Concerts in the park, I'm going to be missing a couple of them. What is it? I was going to talk about illegal fireworks, but that's something that it's very hard to control. And because they start early May, and it goes on whenever there is a championship where, I mean, football, baseball, boxing, whatever. I mean, they always do illegal fireworks, and it's out there, and that's very hard to control. And I'm sure that we hear that from every city that we talk to. And it's a task, you know, to see what we could do about it. But I think that when we did have the task for, tax for, we only gave out, I think the last time it was 10, it was 10 fines. And not enough because my understanding is that you have to catch them in the act in order for you to give them a ticket, and that is very hard to do. Yeah, so it's something that we can think about. Very quick, next council meeting, I won't be here. I will be out of the country. So I will be missing that council meeting, just to excuse myself for that. And I will be missing the fun run, so good luck to all of you. And I want to see pictures. I want to see videos because I want to see you guys dirty. No videos. Just pictures. Okay, as long as I can see your teeth. No, no, but, no, that's it. I really don't have much, so let's move on.
Thank you. So, yeah, I missed the last meeting. COVID is still out there. I got it. My wife got it, and I wasn't able to attend. And just be careful out there. I'm glad that you did listen and stayed because I wanted you to hear that we try our very best to address the pothole issues. And tonight, we're going to be talking about the Tweedy Mile, which you brought up. And one of the things that I hope we remind everybody is that that project has been in the works for about 10 years. It takes a lot of time. But anyhow, we'll get more into that. Southern California Edison, Department of Water and Power, Union Pacific Railroad, they are a pain in our side. And the reason is that we all get frustrated with all the impacts that they have on us. Okay, I get it. DWP, Southern California Edison, we rely on them for certain things. But sometimes they're not the best of neighbors. Union Pacific Railroad, all that stuff that you see there on the side, our staff wants to go in there and clean it up. But they can't because it's not our property. Then they won't clean it up, and we reach out to them and reach out to them and reach out to them so they can come clean it up, and they take their sweet time about it. And it is frustrating because we see that. I coach girls softball at South Gate High, and I park my vehicle right across the street from the railroad tracks. And there's furniture, refrigerators, everything that you can think of, household item. Appliances are out there, and we can report it all we want. And, you know, they don't allow us to go onto their property. And I wanted to share that with you because we share the same frustration. We live here in South Gate. Talked about the fireworks. The riverbed, gentleman who left, I was hoping he would stay. I live by the riverbed. And let me tell you, if you think they sound loud in the regular residential areas, try listening to that echoing sound on the riverbed. It's pretty bad. And he mentioned about the seniors that live on Wood. I live at the Mobile Home Park. That is strictly for seniors, and we all hear that. I talked a little bit about the frustration with DWP and Southern California Edison. Even before I moved into the Thunderbird Villa, which is what the Mobile Home Park is called, I've been complaining to LA County, DWP, Southern California Edison for all the dry brush, all the dry brush that's around, surrounding the outside of the Thunderbird Villa. And they don't do anything to clear it up. Our staff can't go in there because it's not our property. And I've been telling them, one of these days, there's going to be a fire. And all these seniors out here are going to have a problem. Couple of weeks ago, we had a perfect storm. The perfect storm was that it was hot, the dry brush was there, and work was being done at the Mobile Home Park where water was shut off from 8 o'clock in the morning to 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Well, what happened in between there? A homeless person, which we've been complaining about, went down the riverbed and lit fire on all the brush that was there. So with no water to put it out, we had to wait for the fire department to get there. It took them about 20 minutes. It was pretty scary. It was pretty scary for all the seniors that live in that area. At that moment, I took it to the highest level I could. There is no one higher than the chief for LA County firefighters, and I happen to know him. So I reached out to him, and I said, look, this is what happened here. He lost it. He was very angry, and he started calling the W P, Southern California Edison, and LA County. And he basically gave them an order. They have to go in and clean it up. Years ago, many years ago, when I was a child, I visited a fire station during like one of those career day things. And I asked the question, what's the best way to put out a fire? And the answer they gave was prevented in the first place. So here we had a situation that could have been prevented, but because the W P, Southern California Edison, and LA County did not address the issue, resources from the fire department had to go in and take care of the fire. And it was pretty bad. It was worse than I'm saying right now. It was that bad. So now they're going in to clean it. I don't want it to be cleaned up just once. They need to be consistent with it. So I hope that we continue to reach out to the chief of the fire department because he can order them to do this. Why? Because we want to prevent a tragedy, and that could have been really bad for the seniors living there. It was bad. So I share that because I want people to know we are impacted by the things that are out there, and that's one of them. We were talking earlier about the work on Hildreth and the lack of knowledge of letting people know that the work was being done. I got to tell you, photos were sent to me of the work that's being done. They put these light, these poles. I don't even know what they are. But if you take a drive out there, you would ask, I showed one of the photos to the chief, and he asked me, what is that? His guess is as good as mine. It's an ugly-looking pole. I don't even know what it is, but you should take a drive out there and take a look at it, and it is horrible. And maybe we can find out why they decided to put such an ugly-looking pole in that area. And I get it. It's an infrastructure issue. They have basically, as long as they're not violating any municipal code in terms of safety and stuff, they can basically do whatever they want. But this was not good. We weren't aware of it, other than they got the proper permits, but they got the permits from our staff. But that's because there's nothing to say you can't do it. They have eminent domain. Did you want to add something to that? You kind of led me over.
Well, I could. I just will say that Southern California Edison is in the city. Their infrastructure is here. They've got franchise agreements. So they have certain rights to maintain their infrastructure, and they have to meet their standards when they're choosing infrastructure like these large poles. They only choose them for their bigger facilities or their transmission lines where based on today's standard, that is their only option. So right now, if you drive down Long Beach and you see those wooden poles and how they're leaning, those are old standards. Now they're using steel poles. Unfortunately, that is coming through an area where there's residents, but that is what meets their standard for, you know, to be able to supply the power that they need. Unfortunately, they just don't look good in front of anybody's property.
You can use the word ugly. They're ugly. It was ugly. And the bad thing is that our residents have to see that. And I really wish there was something better that they can do. I know that when we have like T-Mobile or AT&amp;T that want to come in and put the towers, the cell towers, they come in and they ask for permission, but they're not Southern California Edison. They're not DWP. So they have to ask us, and one of the things that we ask them is, can you make it look nice? And so they make them look like trees or something really nice. But this thing out there is monstrous. It looks horrible.
Let me ask a question, just because you're bringing it up. So if I'm not mistaken, any new construction in any property, everything has to be underground. Can we require that they put these poles underground so that they're not such a nuisance?
Yeah, so, yeah, every, anybody that works in the public right-of-way needs a permit. Now, there's only so much we can do to make requirements because those are considered betterments. And if you're asking for a betterment, then, you know, they would be asking you to fund the betterment. In terms of undergrounding, the city does have undergrounding funding to the tune of about $4 million that Southern California sets aside for every city. Now, that program's come to an end, but right now we have a $4 million balance. Undergrounding is extremely expensive. They can't just underground in one location. In fact, that particular facility is underground through the park. They're putting in that pole. It's underground through the park, and it comes up over in that area. In Long Beach Boulevard, we're going to use that $4 million, and it's only going to cover a very small section to underground. So while we could do that, either we use the remaining funds or, you know, the city pays for the undergrounding.
And again, these issues have been brought up. A friend of mine, Wanda, reached out to me and brought this to my attention, and it is ugly. The concern was the impact it might have on property, you know, values. I, like I told her, I'm not an expert. I don't do real estate. So I don't know if it will or will not. I can't comment on that. But it still looks ugly, no matter how you look at it. It's just a very ugly-looking thing. I just showed it to my colleague, Reos, here, and it really, really is an ugly thing to have to stare at. And it really, really is an ugly thing to, to have to stare at. And the other concern is this from her making phone calls. She found out that the work is being done. It's going to take about a month to do that. I don't know that it should take that long. But that's what they indicated to her.
Yeah, it's a three week project. But the improvement adjacent to the residential property is limited to a few days. A lot of the work is going to actually be done inside the park. And the heavy lifting has already been done. It was done last night. So the pole's up and that's probably the most impactful. After that, when work is completed at the park, they're just going to put in the conductors, which is overly impactful. So, yeah.
Okay, let's move on. Again, a lot of things, we already talked about the fireworks. And I think the only thing I want to add is I have friends who live in areas where they don't allow fireworks. And they, it doesn't stop. The illegal ones still go on. The only ones that are stopped are the legal ones, the ones that the little kids like to play with. They don't call them sparklers anymore. Whatever they're called, the fun ones that kids like to watch. Those are the illegal ones. I mean, those are the ones that are banned. But the illegal ones are the ones that people still seem to blow up. And again, I bring that up because again, if we were to take a stand on trying to ban them, the only ones you're hurting are the families who want to have a good time and the youth programs and nonprofits that actually benefit from it. But you stop fireworks from being sold, it's not going to stop the people who are going to do the illegal ones. Okay, yeah, a quick five minute break and we'll come back. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I hate to be a nerd here, but I'm going to be. I promised Sonia that we would get out of here expeditiously. And so, huh? At 10:30, right? We said 10:30?
Yes.
Okay, so we ready to go? We're ready to go? I know, I know. Okay, so as we're making our way back, if she's not back in one minute, I'm going to start singing a song. Oh my Lord. You really want to punish people here? Hey, I sing pretty good. Yeah. I tell myself all the time how good I sing.
There you go.
All right, here we go. Consent calendar.
Item items. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 are consent calendar items.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to speak on these items, please come on forward. Step up to the mic. And let me just say something real quick as you come up here. When we ask people to state their name and address for the record, it's something we'd like to keep, but at no time is anybody forced to do that. You know, so state your name and address for the record. And again, get three minutes. Rock on.
There you go. Can you hear me now? Okay, that sounds better. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and other team people here. I'm here today on behalf of Tweedy Mile Association as the president of the organization about all the renovations going to happen on Tweedy Mile. And first of all, we're really excited about it. We really appreciate it. It took a long time to get there, but we're really happy about it. Just a little bit, want to plug in that there's going to be a car show on July 28. Everybody's invited. Bring all your classics, cars, motorcycle, whatever you want to bring. Okay, back to the, back to the topic. So it's item number five. And what I saw that there are two different numbers on the, on the item A and B. So seems like that if they can finish the work more than a month early, the only up charge is like $350,000, which I would say that's not a big difference considering whatever effects it's going to have. So some of the effects will be, one thing is the work got done one month before. It was supposed to get done. And then, as you know, the way economy is, businesses are not doing good. They are, they are struggling. They are barely making ends meet. And this construction will definitely reduce the customers' input, customers coming into the businesses. Because it would be sometime maybe hard or sometime maybe impossible to go to the business, approach to the businesses. So people will be going to businesses, other places beside Tweedy Boulevard. And of course, this will also burden the economy because of the residents also. The residents that use that street on a regular basis, they wouldn't be able to travel that boulevard. So right now, because of the economy and the way situation is, I would think that every hour and every day counts where business, you know, need help from the city. And this boulevard is going to help, but this time period, I think it's really worth saving 30, 30, 30 to plus days. And I understand that this money is not coming from the general fund. So that's another thing, that it's not coming out of this pocket of the city. So I think if we can invest a little bit more money and get this done fast, it will help everybody and everybody will come out as a winner in this situation. And it's not going to be an extra burden on the city. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Lisa Theresa Kaufman. For item number three, will the project be expedited in any way? I understand that there's no set timeline and that things can vary. But I'm wondering if the money that was sought and gotten for the previous contract being broken, if, if that kind of gives us that ability to kind of push to, to finish this sooner than later? For item number four, the freeway widening, why has it taken so long? To me, it seemed like if this would have been done closer to or in tandem with the bridge widening project, that, that could have at least minimized the traffic nightmare that I'm pretty sure is going to happen. I mean, we had to kind of deal with that sort of barrier just being closed off for so long. And I understand COVID happened, but it just feels like this has dragged a lot. And I'm hoping that it won't drag anymore because traffic's bad, you know? It creates pollution. It, it keeps people from, you know, traveling to our city. I, I've worked with people who say they just, you know, avoid Firestone. And, you know, that's potential business lost. We have so many businesses on Firestone and they just don't want to deal with it. And so, and I had just a general question about a part where it says that the city has to front the money and then get reversed. What kind of, where does that money then come from? And what kind of safety improvements will be sought? I know that it mentioned something about kind of, I guess, following through with the American with Disabilities Act. And I know from my previous experience, I haven't gone through after the widening, but I know that those sidewalks are pretty narrow. And as somebody who rides my bicycle often, at least on the Imperial Bridge, I know that that's a little tight. So I'm wondering if, if, at least with the light poles. So I'm wondering if that's going to be considered? And whether a carpool lane will be added? Especially, you know, the, considering the funding source, Measure R, which was mostly having to do with increasing or protecting the environment, at least at heart. For item number seven, the taxi service, has it been used to its capacity? And how do folks that are able to use it know about it? I know it, I think I've seen it on the South Gate Connect, but I'm wondering if there's any other outreach efforts to folks with disabilities and seniors? But I have to go see my baby now, but I'll, I'll be listening.
Thank you. Good to see you again. Okay, I'm going to close the audience portion. And do we have any comments?
Yes, sir. From Mr. Dominguez on items eight and 10. Item number eight, Mr. Dominguez criticizes a retainer agreement for Mr. Salinas Services, expressing dissatisfaction with the proposed hourly rates of $260 to $435. He complains about the difficulty in reaching Mr. Salinas and questions his commitment to handling city business. Mr. Dominguez accuses him of potentially being submissive to the city council and city manager. He requests the city council to reduce the billing rate to 130 to 217.50 per hour, believing it would remind Mr. Salinas of his duty to serve the people rather than acting solely for personal gain. Item number 10, Mr. Dominguez strongly criticizes item number 10 where the city council plans to spend $479,000 from general fund on rental equipment for HVAC systems at City Hall, the police station, and the sports center over seven months. He finds it outrageous that such a large sum is allocated for temporary rentals rather than investing $2 million from ARPA funds in a splash pad. He emphasizes that ARPA funds are taxpayer money with an expiration date and urges council members to prioritize community needs like the splash pad. He states they are denying rightful amenities to the residents. That's it, sir.
Thank you. I'm going to close all the audience portion. Okay, just so everybody understands, when we have items on consent, there used to be a time where we would pull items out. We typically don't do that, but we can get into heavy discussions on them at any time so if anybody wants to address any of the issues. But I do have to say something though on, there's two items that four of us are going to have to recuse ourselves from. So how will we do that? And it has to do with the Tweedy Mile.
Let's, let's revisit those one by one because I'm not sure that may be an accurate statement.
Okay.
I think, and I think the best way to do that is council member by council member. So Mr. Mayor Hurdow, of the items on the consent calendar, which ones do you believe you plan to pull?
I will, well, I don't plan, I'm.
That you plan to recuse yourself?
I will be recusing myself from items two, four, five, six, and 10. Item number two, because it's the Urban Orchard and it's right next door to where I live. The I-710, that section that we're talking about is within 500 feet from.
That's item number four.
That's item number four.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then item five.
Item number 10. Number five and six are with the Tweedy Mile and the park, which I am the president of a youth program. Four, even though it's a nonprofit, I stayed away from participating in anything that can, through optics, appear that it's beneficial. And again, I know legally I don't have to, but I, I will do my very best to recuse myself. And the same thing. And the same thing with item number 10, it's with the sports center, and the JAA's office is there. So it's two, four, five, six, and 10.
Okay, and so in your particular case, two and four are predicated based on your, the location and the proximity to your residence, and you have consistently recused yourself from that. Items five, six, and 10 are not based on your proximity to your residence, but rather your volunteer involvement with the JAA-
That's correct.
A nonprofit organization that provides services at the South Gate Park.
Right.
It's based on that volunteer effort that you're recusing yourself, and you have in the past recused yourself.
Right, legally, I'm not required to, but I, I think all of us have taken the highest road possible-
Yes.
-in doing so.
Okay, and so, let me ask any of the other council members, do they, do you have any concerns, any questions about any of those items that you'd like to get visibility on?
Myself, I normally recuse myself on the Tweety Mile projects, 'cause I do live closer, and it's less than 500 feet from where I live, so that's within the 500 feet.
So that would be item five and-
Five and six.
Yes.
And I always have recused myself, or not participate on these items.
Okay, so we have two council members not participating on five and six, and you're fine participating on two, four, and 10, council?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else?
Raul, I would like to go ahead and recuse myself of item number 10, because I am also a board member for the South Gate Junior Athletic Association, and that facility is within the 500 feet from-
Okay, so on, on council member, Barone, you, you are a volunteer with the same nonprofit, you sit on the board of directors, you do not gain any financial interest as a result of your involvement there, but as a matter of personal preference, you choose to recuse yourself to avoid the appearance of any impropriety, simply because of your volunteer activities?
Yes.
Okay, you don't reside near the South Gate Park?
I do not.
Okay. And as to items two, four, five, and six, you would otherwise participate?
With five and six, just for clarification, because I'm using the office location as the, where I would count the 500 feet. I don't know if the entire park qualifies as the region of the South Gate Junior Athletic Association, and maybe if the city attorney would offer some clarification on that.
One second.
If I may chime in while you're looking that up, I know that when I recuse myself from, like, the 710 issue, I've been advised that legally, it goes from the tip of the border of the northern end of the Thunderbird Villa, and not from where I live.
Right.
You can do multiple things.
I'm sorry, I-
Except for that. That typically, the legal advice I get is that, for example, I live at the Thunderbird Villa, I live at the southern end of the Thunderbird Villa, but when we do a project that's on the northern end, we don't talk, we don't count from my actual location, but from the end of the property line of the actual Thunderbird Villa.
Correct.
And the same thing with the park, I go by the edge of the park, and not from where the office is located at JAA.
So again, let me, let me just clarify what we're doing here, and what the law says. The law says that for purposes of, of a financial interest, if you live within 500 feet, then you should recuse yourself. The, the belief there is that your property may gain in value by actions taken. There's an exception to the rule called the public generally exception, meaning that when all of the residents in the area or citywide benefit, then you fall within that exception, and you don't have to recuse yourself. That, that entire rule about domicile, the 500 feet, would not apply to items five and six, in my opinion, because the, what we're talking about, there are improvements to a city street, and their proximity, not to your home, but to a park where a nonprofit has an office. And whether you go by the streets, or you go by the distance from the end of the Tweety Mile, which I believe ends at Hunt Avenue, many blocks removed from the park, then I don't, I don't think that you have to worry about the distance there. The only question is, you know, whether as a matter of preference, you know, you would want to recuse yourself. I think that you're not required to recuse yourself in this instance, but it becomes a matter of personal preference to you. There's, there would be nothing, in my view, that would prevent you from participating in the vote on I, on the items five and six.
And he's a volunteer, this, like-
You're a volunteer, no, there's no financial interest that would come out of that, but it is your call, Councilmember Barone.
I, I think to stay consistent with the fact that I'm recusing myself with item number 10, I'll go ahead and recuse myself from items number five and six.
Okay, so now we have three people of the, of the council that are recusing themselves. Is anybody else that has any questions about their recusement? No? Mr. Oss?
Yes, I, I did, after consultation with the city attorney and the mayor, and, you know, I looked at this, and I, I think I've been consistent. I looked at the Tweety Mile, it goes up to Hunt, where I live, and it's 500 feet, basically within two football fields. I'm not there, I mean, I don't, I don't think I'm there, so I think I'm pretty good on that one. A sports center, the same thing, I mean, I'm, I mean, so I, I'm, I'm good, I'm good, I feel good, there's no personal benefit for me in none.
Right. So here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna select, because we need to have three of you vote on items five and six.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I've been recusing myself on this item from the beginning, just because I am very close, I mean, to Tweety.
Yes, ma'am.
And I will, I would like to be one of the ones, I would not like to, for them to, to choose, 'cause I'm not voting.
Okay, so under the statute, we, when there are three members of the council who have recused themselves, then we're required to do a random selection, Councilmember Madala. So you're, if you participate in the vote, it'll only be because you were selected through a random process, not because of your own volition. Do you understand that?
Right, but I would not feel comfortable doing that.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, her domicile is within 500 feet, so therefore, she definitely needs to recuse herself. We can have the other two pull-
They're volunteers.
Can we do that?
They are volunteers, and I actually live, live right-
We can do that, Councilmember Madala, we can honor that. I forgot, because you're doing it because of your residence.
Yes.
Yes. So we have two of you that would be subject to vote. I have written a number on a piece of paper, I'm gonna show the number to the acting city manager right next to me. Whoever gets closest to the number between 1 and 20 would be the person that would be selected to vote, all right? And the number has already been written on a sheet of paper, so, Councilmember Barone, could you pick a number between 1 and 20, understanding that if you're closest to that number, you would be the one voting?
Uh, lucky number 13.
13. Mayor Hurdow?
I'm glad he said that, had he said, like, the letter D or something, I would have been, like, freaking out, maybe he shouldn't vote. So 13, then I'll say 12.
Okay, and Assistant City Manager, what is the number?
And the number is 19.
All right, so let the record reflect that it's been verified. Councilmember Barone, you'd be the one voting, and we'll have three of the five council members voting on items five and six.
So we can take up the other items and then pick up, because you had a lot of questions you wanted to address on five and six.
I have some questions in regards to item number five, but it's more clarification, because of the way the agenda bill was written, that if we were to approve it the way it is, it would be extremely confusing, where we need to either pick A or pick B, and then decide, once that's chosen, then everything else is pretty fair.
So it's A?
Or B.
It's, I know that, but it's A plus C through G, or B plus, oh, through G, yeah.
Yeah, but if-
So do we wanna pull that one, because that-
So, we're just gonna vote on, on that.
I just want that to be clarified as to, because the issue was brought up, as to why there's a difference in those two numbers, and the way it's written, it doesn't give us an option of either A or B, it's either approving A all the way through G, but it is confusing.
So, 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 actually, so the, all, all she wants to hear, Raul, is-
Or B.
The options you have are A plus C through G, the second option is B through G. Those are the two options.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Huh?
It's a math problem.
Yes, and I'm a mathematician, so there you go.
Where the parenthesis lies.
And it's, it's the word or.
Or, it's or.
It's the word or.
And that's not in the agenda bill.
Correct.
It is, it is, it's on, it's on item number A, it says 180 working days or approving an agreement.
Yeah, so it's, so that's, so that's a difference, so it's A plus C through G or B through G.
Yeah.
Oh.
So there you guys go.
Okay, so how would you like to proceed, Mr.?
So I, I think we need to take on the other ones first, leave that five for the end. Five and six through the end, and then you guys can vote on that.
Questions on item number seven, too, so that's mine.
Okay, oh, you can ask questions, yeah, yeah. Rock on.
So question for number seven, which would be for Steve. I think in the past I had requested a full report as to the number of calls and services that were given to the seniors, as well as to how many taxis it is that Fiesta Taxi provides to the city, because I had gotten complaints in the past where people, our seniors have called and said there's only one taxi for the entire city. So I just wanna make sure that we put it on the record, how many taxi drivers we actually have allocated to the city of South Gate.
Well, I can answer, I have the vice president of Fiesta Taxi here, and I'm gonna let Marco come up and give you those answers.
Thank you.
Great, good evening, Mayor and city council members, Marco Soto with Fiesta Taxi. First of all, I just wanna thank the city for, for having us as their transportation partner for a long time, and trusting us with the most vulnerable populations, where are the seniors and people with disabilities, to transport them. And also wanna thank staff for, for the recommendation on this item. We have, so the law changed in the way that taxi cabs are regulated, so before is you had to have a, a permit for where you were gonna pick up the trip. So this law passed AB 1069, and then that allowed us to then pick up with any of the taxi fleets that are licensed in any of the cities within LA County. So I just wrote down, I did the calculation of the number of taxi cabs, I'm sorry, just gonna look that up. Here, we have 817 taxi cabs available to the city of South Gate. So these trips appear on, on our dispatch system on a tablet, the drivers that are closest to the, to the order, they, they, they get notified of this taxi cab trip being available, and then if, you know, that first circle of taxi cabs doesn't respond, then it goes to a wider circle, then a wider circle. On top of that, we have incentives that we provide for the drivers, that's not billed to the city, so if there's a trip that was a pre-scheduled trip, and there isn't a taxi cab available for that person, the dispatcher's supposed to offer, you know, a bonus of $20 or, or higher. We also offer a different bonus for dial-a-ride trips. So the drivers that do, I think it's over 75 trips, they get a certain bonus per week, over 100, and then over 120 of the trips, they get a, a higher bonus on, on those trips. And that's just to ensure that the drivers are, are providing service to, to all the programs. On top of that, we have bonuses that we offer to the wheelchair accessible van drivers, because those trips take a little bit longer to, to cover, because you, sometimes you have to go to the door, help the passenger out into, into the vehicle, help them on the car, and then, you know, tie the straps. So those, those, those bonuses are also covered by the shareholders of the company to ensure that, that, that everybody gets a great service. On top of that, just to add this, we, we applied for a grant with Metro last year called Access For All. Every time a TNC trip is booked, TNC is an Uber or Lyft trip, there is a, a fee that's charged to the customer, called the wave fee. That wave fee then is transmitted to the state, to the Public Utilities Commission. The Public Utilities Commission then gives those funds to the local transit agency, in this case, it was, it was Metro. The city wrote a letter of support for our grant application, and we were successful in getting, well, first it was 36 vehicles, then we applied a match of 20%, and we were able to get 53 additional wheelchair accessible vehicles that are available, and we're conducting outreach to all the cities where, where we provide service, just so folks know that that service is available.
Wow, that's good to hear. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it, okay.
Thank you.
So about 18 cabs is what we have in South Gate?
You have access to 817 gigs.
800, okay. Sorry, you spoke really soft. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, just two points of clarity here on, since we're on item number seven, I do think there's a typo in section 6.4C, under Business Automobile Liability Insurance, it says $2 million there, I believe the RFP indicated that it was going to be a $1 million requirement, not a $2 million requirement, I think we need to be consistent with the RFP, since that's how it was let out, and I'm advised by Mr. Costley that that was a error, Scribner's error, as opposed to anything else, so that would be a modification to this agreement. And then lastly, on item number eight, there's a comment by Mr. Dominguez with respect to that, he was under the impression that the retainer agreement in item number eight related to my law firm, and to me, and it is related to a law firm, Libercacity, it is not a law firm that I am a partner of, and the focus there has to do with increasing their rates there, so wanted to make sure there was clarity in the record for that. I did speak with Mr. Dominguez earlier this afternoon, he regretted, asked me to disregard the comment, but I told him it had to be read anyway, since it was part of the submission, and so that's why we had it read.
Yeah, and one thing about attorneys is that, I'm not gonna say anything bad, at least not this time, is that, you know, the investment in attorneys, boy, look at staff is looking at me like I'm, I'm gonna disappoint you. Really, you know, one day I sat down with Raul, and I told him that one of the things that he needs to also do is kind of sort of inform the community as to what it's, has saved us in the years that we've been working together with, with our attorney staff, and we can go back to the Robles days and all the stuff that we went through, and how through the attorneys we recovered a lot of, yeah. So, again, I think it's important that people understand that it's an investment in saving in the long run.
Yep.
There, I said it. Being proactive, yeah. And again, and I appreciate the, the work that our attorneys and, and other attorneys that we work with have, have been doing for the city of South Gate, and I think it's important to, for the community to know that as well. So maybe one of these days, we can kind of sort of do like a presentation of what has been done in the past.
Happy to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
So what, what do we do to move on and, and make-
So someone has to make a motion on those items.
For items two through 10.
Okay.
Who approved items two through 10?
So you're the only one that can second it.
Okay, two, three, four, and seven.
Not all of them.
Two, three, yes, items two through 10.
Two, three, five, six.
All of them.
And then we're gonna recuse ourselves on- Okay, so there's a motion for all of them. So we're gonna do roll call, Mr. City Attorney?
I'm sorry, but we, we requested five and six to be pulled, though.
Yeah, and that's how, so that's why I'm telling her, what we're gonna do is, we're, you're gonna take roll call, and then, but we're gonna wait on five and six.
I'm sorry.
That's not, we wanna clarify that.
We cannot on item number seven, because we need to decide if it's A or if it's B. Am I correct?
It's item number five.
Oh, I'm sorry, item number five, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, item number five, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, five and, five.
Five will be the only one that we have to pull.
So we're gonna skip five and six.
Five and six, I've asked to be pulled for.
Well, if someone asks, if someone asks for an item to be pulled, then it'll get pulled, but it doesn't have to be pulled. The only item that should be pulled is number five because you need to make an election.
It's a selection.
Five.
Five.
Six doesn't require a selection.
No.
They just recuse.
So when you vote, you just, for the record, indicate which of those items you're recusing yourself from.
Got it. So we're just gonna wait on five.
Let me amend my motion, approving items two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Okay. Then we have a second.
A second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barone? Except for on 10.
Well, I requested for item six to be pulled for conversation.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's, that's why I'm not ready to vote on it yet. And that, so if, if, if I can ask questions before I vote?
Yeah.
So regarding that, item number six, so this is a management contract that is, is given a figure based on 180-day schedule of construction. We have an, an opportunity to vote in 145-day schedule, which would allow us to save, you know, the, the original contract is 551,000. If we come in earlier, it's a savings of 37,000. The calculations, if you average it by a daily cost, should say that we should save a little bit more, over about $100,000 in the savings. Now, I know some of the work is related to overtime, and I think that's some of the clarifications that I'm gonna be requesting, is when we speak of overtime, is it just the overtime that is past the, the 10-hour or the night, the eight hours in a day? Or are we also considering weekend work? Is that part of the contract that may be approved?
Yeah, so for the, part of the construction contract is a work schedule of Monday through Friday. On the 180-day schedule, it's an eight-hour day. On the 145-day schedule, it's a 10-hour day.
Okay.
So there's two hours of additional effort that have to be invested in by the construction management team, not just one individual. So if they've got three people working, that could be six hours per day times 45 days, it quickly adds up back to about 100,000. So we, we, that, that relationship on a per day is not linear because it has different working hours. The contractor could request to work on weekends, and we use budget. But know that regardless of what we approve, this is what we think we're gonna spend. We're only gonna pay them for what they work. So if they don't need that much overtime, they won't get paid.
Okay, and then the clarification on 145 days is something I also wanna, it's not consecutive days, right? It could be, they can work three days and then be off for two weeks, come back and work 10 days, be off for, some clarification on that.
It's a yes or no. Yes and no. So it's 145 working days. So Mondays through Friday, but that won't include, it's in the, in the summer, but it's gonna encroach into the winter. So if it rains, it won't include that rain day, right? If it rains 10 days, it won't include the 10 days. Now, it also doesn't include, for example, holidays where the contractor isn't allowed to work. So it's 145 working days at five days a week in general.
So we will have somebody out there working every workable day?
Every work, well, that's really up to the contractor, right? So the schedule is set up to where if the contractor agrees to the 145-day schedule, and that's the contract that is signed, is required to finish that in 145 days. Now, he finishes 80% of the project in the first, you know, three months, and for two months, he goes dormant. He doesn't have to have someone out there every day. At the end of the day, our level of control is that 145 days. And look, but that's gonna be a short schedule. If I had to guess, I would say the contractor's gonna have people out there every day and probably more crews and probably more equipment because it is a, a schedule. But that's really, the means and methods is really up to the contractor.
So let me chime in at this real quick. I have been very upset at how Garfield Avenue and Long Beach Boulevard have taken forever to finish. And that's because I see actually absolutely no activity taking place for days and weeks. And I'm thinking, why can't they finish? And the answer is, they're gonna finish on schedule. So I asked the city manager, how could we make an improvement on that? And he said, well, you know, may, we've not explored this in the past, but maybe we can put out notification, hey, we have a project that covers this period. We would like for you to give us two bids. One that takes this long and one that takes a little bit less. And that's why where we're at. I wish we could have had the knowledge and experience of, that we're having right now. Had we had it before, we might have been able to have a, a different contract with Garfield Avenue and Long Beach Boulevard, and they would have been done a long time ago. And in considering the impact that it's had on the residents and the businesses, that's why we're here. And Bash, as the president of the Tweety Mile Association, is here to discuss how the impact on Tweety Mile merchants could be, and is asking for something that even though it's gonna cost a little bit more, it might be a little bit easier to swallow, knowing that it's gonna finish much sooner. And that's why where we're at. That's why you have these two options. So even though it says 145 days, hey, if they do work one day, don't come back for 100 days, they still have just the four more days to finish the whole project.
Well, I mean, that's.
They have the full amount, but.
Right, but again, that, the point is, as long as they finish it within that window.
So this is on item number six, am I correct?
But item number six, yes, it's.
Okay, so on item number six, all we're talking about is construction management.
Right.
We're not talking about construction of anything.
Gotcha.
Just reviewing and supervising.
Yeah.
So if I did the calculations correctly, at 180 days, we're paying them $3,066.
Right.
At 145 is $3,800. We're talking about a difference of about $750 a day in difference. So, I mean, are they gonna give us a discount or?
Yeah.
I mean, enlighten me. I mean, again, it's dependent on item number five.
Let, let me try to explain that in, in a different way. I would invite the council to look at both as two completely different projects in terms of construction management, right? So construction, managing a project with 145-day schedule versus with 10-hour days is very different than managing a project with 180-day schedule with 80 days. They each have their costs involved. So if you looked at the 145-day schedule, we're allowing longer working days so that they can complete that. So the construction management company is no longer charging us eight hours a day. The team is now charging 10 hours a day. And so if it's, you know, if it's two hours for 145 days, about 290 hours per person for the length of the contract, three people, that's, you know, three times that amount, which quickly adds up to almost 100,000. So it's not that we're getting a discount, it's we're paying them for the work that they're doing to oversee construction during the schedule for the entire working day. That's how that fee is set up, whereas for the 180-day, it's, you know, it just so happens to be that the cost reduction is, would only be about 35 or 37,000 as shown in the staff report. So that's different, there's, there's two different contracts is how I would look at that.
So do you, you know who our management company is, our contracting management company for the Garfield and?
For the park project?
Garfield and Long Beach.
Yeah, the construction management company for Garfield and Long Beach, I believe, is, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Is it the same?
No, it's not the same. This is ZNK. ZNK is doing the construction management for the work at the Holliday Park Community, Holliday Community Park renovation.
Okay, that's all I had on number six.
In regards to the option, what is staff recommending on this?
On this particular item, there is an, an option. This particular item is basically gonna be, i- if for item number five, council chooses a 180-day schedule, then here we'll set up this contract with their 180-day fees. If the council chooses a 145-day schedule, then this contract automatically gets switched over to the lower fees. Yeah, so it'll follow what you decide on item number five.
So then do we want to have the discussion on item number five?
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor.
Okay, so then I'll amend my motion to include items. Sorry. Two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Six.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Continue or start again?
Start, start again, because she changed it to.
We amended the motion?
Yeah.
So the motion has been amended to approve items two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, and 10. Councilmember Rio, second.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barone?
Yes, madam, I'm standing on number 10.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Except on five and six.
Well, that's, that was a part of the motion.
That's the second part of it.
I apologize. And Mayor Hurtado?
So yes, and again, I'm recusing myself from item number two. It's the Urban Orchard, number four, because it's a 710, and that's close to the property. And item number 10, because it's the sports center, and I have an office there.
So with that, we have items number five. So we need to make a decision whether or not we want to go with 180 days or 145 days. Now, I know, Mr. Bash, you did indicate taking the businesses into consideration and the impact it's gonna have on all of them, given the construction that's gonna happen on Tweety Boulevard. Arturo, the 350,000, is that coming out of the general fund, or is that also gonna be coming out of the grants?
That's also gonna be paid for by the.
By the grants?
Grants on local return funds. Yeah.
I would consider the 145 days, just taking our residents as well as our businesses into account. Given the fiasco that we had on Long Beach and Garfield, and how our residents were pretty upset that it was just sitting out there for days and nothing was happening.
And so were we.
So my other question to you, Arturo, would be, if we go with the 145 days, are those gonna be 145 consecutive working days, or are there gonna be breaks? I mean, obviously, if the weather doesn't permit, I understand. But other than that, again, Tweety Boulevard is our downtown.
Yeah.
It's vital.
It is 145 working days consecutively, with the exception of when the contractor can't work, holidays or what have you now. There's also other things that could impact the schedules that contractually we're obligated to address, whether we go with a shorter or longer schedule. And no matter which one you choose, it'll be the same time. Sometimes there's an unforeseen condition that arises that is beyond everybody's control, and so that has to be addressed. It could be that if this project had, this project has a contingency, a pretty good contingency. If the project is completed within the initial contract budget, and we have that balance of funds, we would likely want to issue a change order to address, to do additional work so that we don't lose those hundreds of thousands of dollars of funds. So if the council approves that, there would be more days added. But assuming that the project moves forward with no changes, no interruption of the weather of any kind, it's 145 consecutive working days.
So your motion would be?
Well, we have the discuss.
Right, right, but it's, you have to include the other ones is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, no, well.
Yeah. So I, I do have a question regarding the sequel. So they're currently the, our contractor for our Long Beach and Garfield project, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so we did have some issues regarding some of the work that was being done on the Long Beach Boulevard with the, you know, the signal light indicators being put in incorrect or not completed correctly, some of the, the pebble, you know, you know, workways. And then, of course, then the delay in work that, I, I wouldn't say delay, but they're still on schedule based on what their schedule is to complete. But there is, I've seen roots and, you know, weeds growing on Long Beach Boulevard, which means it's probably been about eight to nine weeks that there's been anything done on there. So, and the, I thought, wow, look, we're gaining, we're actually gaining our plants put in, but no, it's just the weeds they're growing. So those are, that's what I'm concerned about, you know? Is that we're having the same contractor now be chosen to do our Tweety Mile project. I mean, I'm asking staff, are we happy with the work that's being done on Tweety and Garfield?
You know, let me split, let me provide a response in maybe three buckets. Bucket number one is what you see out in the field and what you don't see, right? When we, when the contractor is working on work that is underground, for example, putting foundations or whatever, that work is not very visible, and the contractor is focusing on that, not focusing on medians, for example. It gives the appearance that we're not making progress on the project for the schedule. And so that's one challenge that we're having out there. Second, when medians are ready for planting, that means there's, there's a number of things that have to be completed. Irrigation, the, you know, the median can be completed, the dirt can be in place, but irrigation has to be in place. And Southern California Edison has to power the irrigation to be able to feed water to those plants. So sometimes if we allow the contractor to, to do that, they'll plant it, and then the plants will, will die, right? So that there are certain challenges there that we're experiencing, but you're exactly on point. It's just that project's progressing in a way that could have been more efficient for a number of, every other reason. So what we're doing with this project is attempting to provide that solution. When you reduce the number of working days, they have to work more expeditiously and upfront. They have to plan in a way where there's gonna be more crews, there's gonna be overlapping work and what have you. The fact that we have the same contractor, from my perspective, is actually a benefit to the city from this perspective. Because they're here, they've been the low bidder on these projects by a lot of money. In this case, they're the low bidder combined by almost a million to the first, second guy, and more than 2 million to the third guy. And so if we look at that street wide, we were saving a lot of money by going with this contractor. Them being the low bidder here on a reduced schedule doesn't make them less qualified or more prone to cause issues because contractually, they have to abide to the contract. If they agree, if they sign the 145 working days and they don't complete the project, in those days, not only do they get, not get the 350,000, they're also subject to liquidated damages in the amount of about $7,000 a day. So from my perspective, I think they're a qualified contractor. I think that with the schedule, whatever schedule the council chooses, they will continue to progress as per schedule. And if they don't, we have tools to be able to assess through, you know, penalties or liquidated damages.
And, uh, sorry, Art, how is the 145-days, you know, number came up with? Why not 120? Why not 100?
Yeah, and that's a really good question. So in, in the industry in general, agencies bid projects with a schedule that has a certain number of working days that is usually necessary or typically necessary to complete a project of a certain magnitude. And when that, that usually comes, that recommendation usually comes from a consultant, where they'll say, here's the number of days that you need to get your average competitive bid. Now, as a, as, and most public agencies go with that as way to control costs. Now, as a public agencies, we could choose charter schedules. And when we do that, we know that that is gonna cost more. When we're choosing shorter schedules, we have to be reasonable and realistic. Can a project really be done in half the time? There's procurement, you know, if, you know, there's some procurements that take a really long time. So we thought that a 20% difference would be a reasonable commitment, not only for the contractor, but for us, who are trying to set expectations for the community that we're gonna deliver a project in a certain timeframe, that can be done. And so we think that a 20% reduction in the schedule is reasonable and, and accomplishable. Every contractor submitted a bid for that, and they were all good contractors. So we think it, it could be. So we think it could be accomplished. If we choose less days, I think it's a risk. We could talk to the contractor and say, hey, can you do this in 20 working days less or 40 working days less? And if so, what would be your plan and what would be the city's cost? And if we agreed to that, there's probably a cost. We can accommodate that through a change order or what have you. But we can explore that. At this point in time, our recommendation was either go with this typical schedule or go with the 145-day schedule.
All right, you have a motion?
I have a question.
And a question.
In reading this, no Christmas parade? No Tweedy Mile fair?
Yes. Construction projects have impacts, unfortunately. With regards to the Tweedy Mile Parade, we did talk to Tweedy Mile folks. Mr. Greg Martinez was part of that meeting, and he was perfectly fine with not having that. I get that the community is an impact and everybody wants to be there, but the community also wants to see roadway improvement, safety, improve a better environment for the Tweety. And so the impact is simply, we won't be able to have the Christmas parade during that.
So that would be this Christmas, correct?
That would be this Christmas parade. Next Christmas parade, we would be done with this construction. There is a phase two project that does not occur within the Tweedy Mile. So we can look at how that parade can be held. And, but at this point in time, I'm not sure that it needs to be canceled.
So the parade route is from California to the park. Can we prioritize that as phase one so we can have a Christmas parade?
We can, right now, we're committed to what we have, right? Because the contract is in place. How we can, we can look at how we can phase, phase two, we can possibly build it in first phase that will accommodate that. But we can talk about that and the implications of that.
Just because I know the kids are looking forward to Santa.
Move it to Holliday, too. Yeah, you know.
Oh, you know what?
We can discuss.
That's a discussion, yeah.
That's a different discussion.
But it's a good one.
Okay, but thank you. Any other questions?
I'll second.
I will make the motion to approve B through G.
Are you seconding that?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Si.
Vice Mayor Davila is.
She needed to leave, and she's not, she's recusing herself anyway.
And Mayor Hurtado.
I'm recusing myself on this.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for allowing me to lead this discussion.
Oh, not a problem. I'm out of the picture on this one. Okay, where are we at?
One more, right?
One.
No, item number six was also pulled.
Yeah, so, so now we have to, I'll make a motion to approve item number six.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila is, she recused, then she's gone.
And I'm recusing myself.
And Mayor Hurtado.
I'm recusing myself, yes. Okay, last item in the books.
Item 11, the city council will consider approving the warrant register for July 9, 2024. Grand total, $1,483,054.68. Cancellations, 100137, 100541, 100707, and various stale-dated checks as listed in the staff report.
Mr. Auditor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and open up to any member here in the audience. There is no one here, so I'll, was there any emails for warrant registry?
None.
Bring it back to council. What are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila is not in the council chambers. And Mayor Hurtado?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I would like to adjourn in memoriam of all of the victims because of this hurricane that has come through the Caribbean and has impacted Mexico and is now impacting Houston. So it's really made its way through a lot of countries.
That'll be the, the order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night and thank you, everyone.
Thank you.